Welcome. And this evening to this evening's Groveland Board of Selectment meeting, Monday, March 4th, 2019, 6:30. Bill O'Reilly and journey to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as. Awesome, thank you. Hope everyone survived the snow.
I think we're getting a little close down this side, too.
Snow day. Alternative learning day. We had some fun here. Since no one gave proper comments, we'll jump right into the full book of the warrants. So, approval warrant 19-35 in the amount of $152,481.7. Second. Motion to second, any further discussion? Seems none of us in favor.
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant 19-34 in the amount of $1,414. Second. Motion to second, any further discussion? Seems none of us in favor.
Yep.
Motion to approve bill warrant 19-35 in the amount of $1,158,818, which breaks down in the following. Town $60,924.24, larger two at $9,574.95. Payroll holding $46,768.44. Light bills $207,864.95. Rancelling revolving $30,736.76. And if it's like a assessment, $794,970.66. Second. Motion to second, any further discussion? Seems none of us in favor.
No.
So, right now, we'd like to introduce our new highway superintendent, Mr. Lenny Carroll. You'd like to step to the podium?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll, we know you're a busy man. We won't keep you long. We just invited you here so that we could get a, put a name, a face to the name. Glad you came forward, decided to take the position. We look forward to you working with us. You can see the roads, how awesome they were after the big storm we had.
Yep.
Hopefully, that continues, great work that they've had. And that's about it. I've been welcome aboard. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to servicing you guys. Absolutely.
Well, I'm just, you know, welcome. It was good to finally get a chance to interview you. I think you're great for the role. I think you're going to do a great job, so I'm welcome aboard.
Awesome, thank you.
No, welcome aboard and look forward to working with you, and I think we should have a good relationship back and forth.
Absolutely.
No, I don't have anything. I think we took care of it all in our meeting, in our interviews the last time. Just good luck and welcome.
Awesome. I look forward to getting here in the next week or two and starting with my feet on the ground, running, and get done what we need to get done. So, very excited to get here and get it, you know, get the ball rolling, so.
Awesome.
I thank you, I thank the board, and I thank all your time, and that, you know, what you guys, what you guys want to be and accomplish, I'm looking to get you guys there. Absolutely.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your time. Hopefully, that was quick and painless enough, and hopefully, now everybody has a face to the name, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay. Next, we have the appointment of Kyle Elargel. Is that correct? Okay. Twenty-two Mills from Groveland to the Division of Reserve Dispatch, lockup keeper, effective March 4th, 2019 through June 30th, 2019.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, and we got the recommendation from the police department, move forward.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seems none of us in favor.
Yep.
We have appointment of Jennifer Connor Mills, 12 Merrimack River Road, Groveland to the zoning board of appeals, effective March 4th, 2019 through June 30th, 2019. I understand due to personal matters, Jennifer was not able to attend, but I don't think that's an issue. You're not with me, or not with anyone.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jennifer Connor Mills, 12 Merrimack River Road, to the Groveland zoning board of appeals, effective March 4th, 2019 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
And motion to second, any further discussion?
No, I'd just like to thank you for stepping up, new to Groveland. Thank you for stepping up, and hopefully, others will do the same for some of the other openings that we have on some of the other boards. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say someone that's new to town would want to step up. We have a bunch of open positions, some of them new, just jump right in.
You don't care for all those comments? So, look for the comments, all those in favor.
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have the appointment of the Elm Square Committee. We have seven members, effective March 4th, 2019 through June 30th, 2019. I believe we've already discussed, this committee's charge, there's no reason we have that unless someone wishes to. I mean, it's very specific in scope, and hopefully, I'll, I'll just better understand what we can do down there. Does anybody here take them? Does anybody have a preference when we're another, where we take people individually or as a group?
Yeah, just do it as a group.
Is that a consensus? You fine with that?
Sure, sure.
Take them as a, as a group or?
Yeah.
As a group, okay. Group is fine, so that's a consensus, so. If someone wants to make a motion to form this committee of seven?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint the seven, and I'll read them. Mike Dempsey, Betty Gorski, Greg Stark, Jack Bevelacqua, Brian Cornell, Lee Yang, and Joanna Davis, to the Elm Square Committee, effective March 4th, 2019 to June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seems none of us in favor.
Yep.
Okay. The lock committee. Next, we have discussion, possible votes. Discussion of section seven benefits, leaves and eligibility of the draft personnel procedures manual.
So, if I can just quickly?
No.
I got one email response.
You did?
And that was, they were concerned, it was a newer employee concerned about what would happen with their current sick time that they recruit. How would that convert to the new calculation? And why are they losing three days in the conversion? Going on vacation, first on sick, they seem to be losing three days in the calculation. I said I will pass those along to the board.
In that question?
Yes. Well, take a new employee, for example, after a year, they've got two weeks vacation, they have 15 sick days in a year, that's six more days, so that's five weeks and three days in total. Proposal is five weeks. So, I told them that the benefit is they get to use all five weeks as a feature if they want it or personal, that it's more flexibility than they currently have, and that's the benefit you get, but I told them I would order one.
I mean, it's certainly not the time. It's not going to make us more competitive. I mean, you don't want to, really, you don't want to press something. I think one of the first things we need to look at is how the existing vacation policy includes where people potentially not be eligible for any vacation time for 23 months.
Correct. Correct. So, from the current policy, you are hired to start even July 2nd. So, the current policy is it depends on where you are July 1st. You have to work a full year as of July 1st in order to get two weeks vacation. If you're hired on July 15th, you're not at one year as of July 1st, you're technically supposed to wait another full year before you get vacation time. As I've told the board, I don't do it that way. I just don't think that's fair. So, anyone that's hired like July, August, I give them their two weeks on the following July 1st. I just can't make someone wait 23 months, 22 months for a vacation time. I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't think that the recipe for success in hiring is to retain.
Exactly.
For my part, too, but I don't understand what the logic would be to have that off duty.
I don't know if anyone ever thought that I would turn over the passport and translate this to an employee.
That's what we wanted to ask.
Well, you had two employees, one was on the committee.
Well, I guess we have to hear comments. So, I'd like to start.
Debbie Webster, I work in the assessor's office. I did go to a couple of the meetings when they were working on this draft. A couple of comments that I have is the biggest change to this, that between what we have for benefits now, what we don't, would be geared towards more long-term employees, and that would be the sick leave buyback. It looks like that's the biggest change that's being dropped. Not quite sure why. I mean, going to PTO is not necessarily a bad thing, but if we are going to do PTO, there does need to be some language cleanup remaining in this because it still does refer to sick time, doctor's notes, and vacation in parts of the document. So, it's just a matter of if it's going to be a true PTO, then the language in that should be cleaned up. Another thing is, we all, when we started, I'm well aware of when they made transitions for other companies to, from vacation to PTO, we all had to wait for our time. So, even though people may consider us front-loaded on July 1st, because that's usually when everything resets, we've actually worked that time and earned it as of July 1st. In other transitions with other companies, I'd like to know how the transition's going to be handled for those who choose to go under the new bylaw, because if you're just going to start at zero and start accruing, you know, based on the schedule set forth here, you've taken away the accrued vacation time that the person earned from the prior year, because we did have to wait to get our time. So, it's actually not front-loading, it's actually getting time that we earned for the prior year. So, I don't know if you guys have taken into consideration how the changeover's going to be. Will people get their time and then start for that first year? It'll only affect, obviously, the first year.
The other comment I had is, in here, it states anyone with five years or more can choose whether they want to go under the new policy or stay under the old policy. I think that's kind of unfair to someone who may have started four years ago and did get their time. I mean, they may want to stay under the old policy. I do think it should be anyone who is already hired should be allowed to choose between the two policies. I mean, obviously, that's your decision, but I just think if somebody did come here and they were hired under a certain benefit package, that they should be offered, if they're already here, which one they'd like to go under. We are losing benefits, I mean, not by a lot. The new employees don't lose a lot, but if you look at what the long-term employee has as you get further and further on in your career here, compared to what we have now, you do lose more and more. If you compare what somebody like me, who has more than 20 years' service here, you lose a lot of time under the new one. Plus, you're losing your sick leave buyback. It would only affect the non-contractual people, which is very few of us. Most people are under contract. Police are under contract, highways under contract. The only ones it would basically cover would be town hall proper employees and library. Dispatch has a contract, police, you know, like I said, their benefits would be, probably stay the same. Now, if the selectmen are looking to save money, or eventually change everyone over to a PTO schedule, you know, you're well aware when negotiating new contracts is typically, if somebody's giving up something, they want something. Benefits, yes, cost money. Sick leave buyback costs money. It's a one-time expense. If you negotiate out sick leave buyback and in turn possibly bump up a salary to make up for it, to get that sick leave buyback to go away, you've actually raised your costs going forward, because most of the employee costs for the town, retirement, that type of thing is based on your salary, not on your benefits. Sick leave buyback doesn't bump up anybody's benefits for retirement when they retire. It's something that's given to a longtime employee who hasn't abused their sick time as a thanks, you know, different contracts call for different buyback amounts. Ours here are 30%. We can only accrue up to 180 days, so we get 30% of it upon retirement only. Not if we quit, not if we leave and go get another job, it's upon retirement. So, I would like to see the board of selectmen, if that's really what you want to do, that's fine. I think, I've looked at other personnel bylaws. This isn't a bad one. The new one's not a bad one. What we had wasn't a bad one. There was some language that needed to be cleared up because the new employees were getting, that wasn't the intention of it. Actually, there was a change in 2011 that reverted it back to the old way of making you wait. That, it was changed in 2000 to get rid of it, and then somehow it reappeared. I'm not quite sure what, how that happened, but it did. So, I mean, like I said, the major points are, I think, any employee that's currently hired should have the choice between the two, the old and the new. I really think sick leave buyback can be a benefit if you want to retain people. I understand you want to get new hires, but you don't want this, this to be a revolving door either. I would think you'd want to retain your people. You don't want someone coming here just to get the experience and then go somewhere else, because then you've taken the time to train these people. You've kind of suffered through their errors and mistakes in them learning the job, and then once they become proficient at their job, they go somewhere else. This is, this current poli, I, I think, my opinion, is this current policy does not really reward you for staying here any length of time. Yes, it's geared towards the newer employees. Yes, it needs to be fixed. Definitely, the language needs to be fixed, but I don't think retention-wise, you have anything here for an employee to think, hey, I want to stay here, I want to make this my career, I want to stay in Groveland. There's no longevity. A lot of places who have something like this have longevity. There's no longevity, and you've gotten rid of PTO.
By longevity, is that more specific?
Well, longevity, a lot of towns have it based on the amount of service. You get like just a flat fee increase. It can be anywhere from just a few hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. It varies town to town, and it's all over the place. It's a one-time, you know, payment in addition to your salary. So, it's a longevity clause, and a lot of towns do have it, who have, the towns have all kinds of different benefits. I mean, I, one of the things I was a little bothered by with this was some of the towns they were comparing to. I felt as though we should be compared to our peers, meaning immediate, in the immediate area, because that's where we're going to be, that's where our competition is. You know, generally, people don't travel unless it's a high-paying job. I mean, your high-salary jobs, people will travel to come here. But if you're talking about your average worker, usually, you're going to be pulling employees from a local area within so many miles. So, you want to look at what other towns in your immediate competition area is offering if you want to try to attract people here as new hires and keep them. There are some, some departments here that you don't want people, you don't want a revolving door.
To a point, I can agree, however, it's tough to pay less, compare itself to Amazon. I mean, they don't have, they don't have similar resources.
No, I, I know, I don't mean to other companies. I mean, compare us to other towns our size.
But you said compare to other towns around us. Other towns around us may be comparable in geographic proximity, but not anywhere near us in financial proximity, so it makes us worlds apart, as far as apart as pay less than Amazon, you know what I mean?
Well, we have.
We might be next door to each other.
Right.
But we're not on the same.
Well, the only community that wouldn't be relevant to us would be like a Newbury Port, Haverhill, Danvers, Peabody. I mean, because they're, they have split tax rates, they have a big business base, they have a much bigger community, but we have a ton of communities. I mean, even Middleton, Topsfield, Rowley, Newbury, Salisbury, Merrimack, West Newbury, Georgetown.
What are you talking, what are you talking about? Salary, you're talking?
No, I'm just talking about towns of similar size, towns of similar, you know, reasonably within our budget.
Comparing what?
Budgets, the size of your budgets, and the, and the size of your population.
Comparing salaries, or we comparing benefits, we comparing time off?
Well, that was, well, that was one of the other things that, that I had a comment with that board, and they weren't charged with that, so they didn't look at that. Sometimes, when you look at benefits, if you're looking at one piece of the pie, okay, which they were charged to do, was just basically vacation time, that, that was their charge. The only problem with that is benefits in a higher salary community may be less, and benefits in a lower-paying community may be higher, because, you know, people get jobs for one of two reasons. One, they want the money, they want max money, they're going to move around, change jobs, get the most money they can. Or potentially, they're going for the benefits. Maybe they want the convenience, maybe they want the, you know, the ease of time off or close to home, or, you know, there's different reasons people get jobs.
Right. But now, trying to understand the goal of this mission, you know, from the onset here was to bring the current handbook up to par with what's out there in the competition, both municipal and private, to make us competitive, to make us better able to attract and retain employees. It wasn't in any way meant to harm employees, and nothing, as far as I know, is written in stone yet. So, I mean, the whole exercise here was to define language better, make it more attractive. But at the end of the day, it has to work for Groveland, too.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
It has to work with the budget, it has to work with people. So, there are a lot of intangibles associated with this whole process that it's not just dollars and cents, you know what I mean?
No, I understand that, but, but the big change is here, okay? The big.
And the changes aren't meant to harm anybody.
Right.
If we want to harm anybody by them, I would recommend that we not do that. We're just looking to update it, enhance it, and make it so it's more attractive. What I'm being, he's tacking me out, he's tapping me out. All right.
Well, then, if that's the case, then I would, I would encourage the board, if they would please take a look again at what our current benefits give us compared to what the new benefits are, and the biggest change is being, the more senior employees get less time. There's no sick leave buyback, and we would be the, just about the only ones, other than some high-end contractual people who do not have sick leave buyback, but almost all the other employees in the town do have sick leave buyback. So, unless that's something that the board's thinking about changing going forward, I mean, that's, you know, and we're the ones to get it first. I mean, I guess you got to start somewhere first, if that's the goal of the selectmen going forward over the years. I mean, I don't know what, what's your goal, but, but those are two major disadvantages of the current plan, and it definitely needs to be redone, absolutely, and they worked hard at doing it, and there was a lot of language that was very ambiguous, that needed to be clarified. This hopefully will do it. I'm just not sure, you know, with some of the changes, you know, making it fair for the people who are here, like I said, maybe allowing people who have been here, currently employed, to be able to pick.
Well, again, this is a work in progress. Nothing is written in stone, so.
Yep.
We're working toward that end. So, your talking points are, let me get it right.
Yep.
Sick time, buyback, and new hires versus current employees.
Well, people who are currently employed, yes, being able to choose rather than the five-year mark.
I think we get that.
And again, looking at the benefits for people who've been here for 10 years plus. The benefits compared to what we have now today for the long-term employee.
Right.
We get reduced as we go under this current plan.
Under the new one.
Yeah.
If the new one were to take effect.
If the new one were to take effect.
As it is written.
Yes.
So.
But may I just add a comment to that? But there was a caveat in there that existing employees don't have to take the PTO plan. So, you could stay exactly where you are with no impact at all to your.
Oh, no, for me, for me personally, it may not, it's not going to affect me, because, I mean, you know, I'm near the end of my career. I've worked for the town since 1986 in various capacities, okay? So, I'm not looking at it for my own self-gratification. I'm just thinking of it from being a resident and being an employee. I think it's good for the town to not have a revolving door of people, yes, attract new hires, but also to keep those new hires. You want people to stay here. You want people to be, make their career here, because that's best for the town going forward.
But that's, that's, that is the goal.
Right, but I'm not sure this is going to.
Behind the whole exercise.
I don't think this is going to do that, because, again.
Well, okay.
There's another component, which is the salary portion of it.
And we get it, and we get it. We have to, we have to look at this.
Yeah.
And be a little more diligent, and make sure we don't harm anybody by doing that, and make sure we still are attractive to candidates while living within our budget.
Right. So, cleaning up the language, because there is the language in there about sick time and vacation.
Right. Sick time, long-term benefits, and new hires versus current.
I would like, I personally think any employee currently hired, rather than the five-year mark, should be able to pick, rather than just those of us with more than five years. And I just relook to see, you know, I mean, we may be losing time, people may be okay with that, because the PTO, it is. I mean, Denise makes a good point. It's so much easier to just, you know, say, hey, I'd like to take three days off. You don't have to say what it's for. PTO gives you that flexibility. There is definitely a plus to having PTO. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to say there isn't. There definitely is. And, but those were my major points, is sick leave buyback, current employees being able to choose rather than five years, and just taking a look at what people are actually losing.
Terrific.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Lynn.
Hi, I'm Lynn Stanton. I'm director at the Council on Aging. I worked on the Personnel Advisory Board on this document. Deb, I must say, to her credit, has been a diligent reader. She's done her homework. She's been really actually on top of the different things that she finds of concern. A couple of things I just wanted to clarify in terms of benefits going forward. As I indicated before, my primary interest on being on the board was to make sure that those of us who have been with the town for a long those of us who have been with the town for a long time didn't lose sick day buyback, vacation time that we had accrued, and so on. I think one of the really positive things about PTO, which gets overlooked, as it currently stands, we get 15, current employees receive 15 sick days a year available to them. When PTO is utilized, you all of a sudden have all of those 15 days to access. As it stands now, if I took 15 sick days in a year, my position might be in jeopardy. People would be like, Cheekus, Lynn, what's, what's, what's wrong? Why are you taking so much sick time? Most people in this building, to their credit, and part of this is the opportunity to utilize, you know, the sick day buyback, is we're, we're stingy with the times we take sick days. People, I think, on average, I think it would be fair to say, three to five sick days a year, tops. With this new plan, they're, the paid time off plan, you know, the opportunity to use all of those sick days for whatever purpose is available. And that has not been so in the past. So while we may have, as Deb indicated, have lost perhaps a couple of personal days, I don't think, I don't think that's tragic. I don't think any of us working on this document considered that tragic. Because you have the opportunity to utilize all of those sick days. Now is one great big pot. So that was fair. The fact, if you choose to go with the new plan, and we don't have a sick day buyback, there was concern that, that I was aware of, and the folks on Personnel Advisory were making mention of, what if you had some really yucky, terrible illness occur that's gonna be more than you have available in terms of your PTO? I think what might be useful for the Board of Selectment to consider is some sort of insurance for employees to pick up that would pick up that sort of situation. And it can happen to anybody. You know, you can either, you know, come down with some dread disease, or get hit by a bus, or whatever. So I think that might be a useful sidebar, if you will. The five-year option, you know, we, we talked about that a lot. You know, Deb has concerns about that. Why should this not be made available, the, the opportunity to stay with the current plan, or to go with the new one, have that occur from the get-go? Again, that's up to you in, in your discussions. You are, after all, the main dog. We are, not to be little who we are, we're, we're the tail. So we're not, and our purpose in this document was not to be wagging the dog. So that's something to consider. This, in the end, is, is your decision with, with our input. You know, the taxpayers of Groveland are the ones that fit, you know, pay the bill for all of this. So, you know, Deb's right, she's a taxpayer, it's important. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments to-
Yeah, I don't, I think, I think Debbie had some, some, some great, some great comments. Maybe, maybe what you could do is, could you list, list the benefits that the senior employee feel that are going to lose with this, with this new one, and present that to us? Show it to us on paper. The thing that troubled me is something that Lynn had just mentioned, that about, you get somebody that come down with an illness, and, you know, people are gonna use their paid time off in one year, they're gonna use their, they're gonna use their vacation time, their sick time, their personal time, they're gonna use it all up. So at the end of the year, people aren't gonna save, under this particular plan, they're not gonna save sick days. And it, a couple of things come to mind. What happens if somebody's gonna be out with a long-term injury, and, and they haven't saved any time? And for, for one thing, and then you talk about the, that the selectmen could, an insurance plan. Well, that's something, I think, that if an insurance plan, that's something that the employees should be, should be providing, rather than the, than the town of Groveland. If, if they're gonna use up their sick time in one year, and, and end up with, with zero, and then come down with, with an off, off the, off-the-job injury, they fall, they break a leg, and they can't come in, and they don't have any time, what happens to the office? That person might be out for six months, and some of these offices here in the Town Hall only have one employee. Now, like, like Debbie, supposing that she, supposing she going home, she, she slips on the ice, she breaks her leg, you might be out for six months. What's, what's that again?
Charles jinxed me.
You know, that happened this week.
I know.
That happened this week, that I, I had just been mentioning somebody's name, and then, then you read them in the paper, read about it in the paper. But anyway, yeah, I'm gonna retract that statement, we'll, we'll use Tracy as an example. Well, no, he's not an employee. But someone falls down, they break their leg. Now, the, people are gonna use their time. They're not gonna save it, because they don't think they're gonna need it. And they're gonna end up, they're ending up with a, with a long, on a long-term injury that not covered under workman's compensation, and they're not gonna have any time to be able to collect any money. I think you wanna respond to that?
I do have a couple of thoughts. One is, if you're a new employee, you've only been here a little bit, you wouldn't have much by way of sick time accumulated anyway. You know, our, our thought was, in an effort to attract new employees, not to do the old revolving door situation, but new employees who've been here less than five years haven't got much accumulated anyway. So there's that. I mean, that's, that's not gonna be an issue, because they don't anyway. And in terms of insurance, and when you're out for longer than the available paid time off that you have, that would be something that an employee would want to pick up. Not necessarily, it's like the whole business of required health insurance, some are gonna pick it up, some aren't, and will pay the penalty. Ditto with this approach. It's a similar analogy. Another item I wa, I would, and I'd forgotten to mention at the outset, the first page of that document talks about the Personnel Advisory Board being the conclusive authority to interpret the Personnel Bylaw, and to decide all questions relating to its application, blah, blah, blah. The Board recommends all Personnel Bylaw amendments, this Personnel Advisory Board that I've been on. Personnel salary wage increases and/or increases employee, employees' weekly hours, blah, blah, blah. That's not something that we felt that the Personnel Advisory Board should be taking on. But that's the first page of our document, the current Personnel Manual, and that, in the course of our discussions, we were talking about that really needs to be removed. Because the Personnel Advisory Board, in any, and I've been on previous ones years ago, that was not something that was ever under our jurisdiction, and should probably fairly be removed.
Just, you know, I did, I did have that underlined on, on page one, going on to page two, but I had it, I, I had it under, the question under, under the grievance procedure. It says, "The Personnel Advisory Board shall constitute a Board of Appeal for grievances of town employees. This, this appealed procedure is outlined in the grievance procedure contained in this manual." And I read in the grievance procedure, man, in the manual, on page 13, there is, there is not one mention about the Personnel Advisory Board in that grievance procedure.
Right, that's correct. It, and if you're looking at the one that was emailed to everyone, the current document dated 2/14/19, under Grievance Procedure, it has, Personnel Advisory Board isn't in there at all. So I don't know what one you're looking at.
Right. I agree, but we're really not looking-
2/14/19.
But we're really not looking at that section at all right now.
No, but I mean, just in, well, yeah, grievances, that's, that's a horse of another color.
But we, we're not discussing.
No.
We're trying to stick to the topic at hand, which is leave.
But I just wanted, I just wanted to include, we're not, we're not this, so-
Could you, as a member of the Advisory Board, could you, could you outline the advantages to the, to the taxpayers of this particular document?
The advantages?
Yeah. Is, is this, is this advantage to the employees or advantage to the, to the taxpayers?
I don't know, that, that had half, that, there are many variables involved in that. And I don't think that's my task. That was not our task, nor was that our charge. Our charge was simply to try to create a more modern document in an effort to appeal to new employees. You know, Deb was talking about Towns and so on, that we focused on. We did, we looked at West Newbury, we looked at Merrimack, their policies. We looked at Hamilton, Wyndham, we looked at Georgetown, we looked at Salisbury, we looked at Tingsboro. So we did, in fact, make a, an effort to stick with the demographics that are, are similar to Groveland's.
Thought, maybe I'm putting you on the spot.
Go ahead, you can put on the spot.
But what was the thought of the Advisory Board to start it off at, at five years, that those can, they can choose either one, rather than all current employees?
It was somewhat arbitrary. It was, it was, it was a situation where those folks who've been here for five years, and less, the thought was, it would be more appealing to have more time, which is what this offers. That's all.
You all set?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set for now.
Second one?
As, as far as taxpayer-
Second one had a question.
I, it was so long ago, I forgot what I was gonna ask.
Well, try to remember.
Doesn't the town offer supplemental long-term disability insurance?
Yes.
We're, we're talking short term.
We offer both. But I think Debbie and I are the only two that have it, to be honest with you. No one else wanted it when we offered.
I mean, I buy that also with my will, so I have insurance, and then I have long-term and short-term disability insurance. So it's no different here, or anywhere else.
Yeah, we just, it's just something that, you know, we have an open enrollment period where it's offered. So it'd be more a matter of stressing it or highlighting that this is a useful option for us.
Yeah, especially short-term, because, yeah, long-term, a lot of-
And it's not expensive, so it's-
No, no, I don't think so.
Relatively speaking, it's not-
I don't know what the cost would be if we didn't have time, but, as far as cost to the taxpayer, I'm not sure if this will end up staying in there. There is a provision, which I guess you could look at as a good thing, for certain employees who feel comfortable, well, don't use their time, is, there's a buyback in here, year to year. And that's, I believe, on page 21. It gives you the opportunity, I think, with people with less than 20, to get five days, so basically, an extra week of pay. And those 20 years, two weeks, am I reading that correct, Denise, and that, on page 21?
I am right.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, to be honest with you, from a taxpayer's perspective, over time, that's gonna cost you way more than the sick leave buyback, because you're gonna be paying that on a ongoing basis. Let's say somebody does stay here a long time, and they take that extra week pay every year. Okay? That, I mean, for example, we'll use my numbers approximately. If I get my 30% sick leave buyback, I've been here 30 years, I'm gonna get approximately $9,000, correct?
Yeah.
In, in a sick leave buyback. If I had been taking a week of extra pay for those 30 years, it's way more than $9,000, a lot more, depending on the salary. Obviously, the lower-paid people won't be as much, higher-paid people will be a lot. In my current salary, that would be $1,000. So, I mean, so I don't know what your intent was, you know, with this. That's not necessarily a bad thing, other towns do have that. I mean, that, this is something that is in other towns' personnel bylaws, I've seen them. Whether or not we wanna adopt it is something that you, you know, you need to consider, the cost going forward. I'm not sure, I don't think that's gonna affect retirement either. I think any kind of sick leave buyback does not count towards salary, so it won't affect benefits, you know, for retirement benefits going forward. So, I mean, that's just something to consider. I mean, as a new employee, that's kind of a nice thing, if I don't think I need to use the time, I can boost my salary up. I like the idea of having sick time in case, as Ed, Ed said, if something were to happen to me, and knock on wood, I've been lucky so far, I've been very healthy, other than flu or something like that, I haven't, I've never had to take extended sick leave. But I always felt comfortable knowing I had the time, that if something did happen, I had those, those days that I could use. And when we accrue to, you know, we're maxed out, we lose those days. Like now, I'm losing days, I don't accrue anymore. But, so-
Generally, generally speaking, in, in any kind of a, I don't care what kind of a job you're in, whether you're in a private industry, you're in, working for a municipality, the younger workers are generally more, more healthy. And it's the ones that, it's the ones that are, been on, been working 25, 30 years, that probably have more medical problems, and they're, they're the ones that are gonna need that, a cured sick time, and, you know, people look, sometimes they look for-
Right.
The, the, the big benefit in the beginning, and they don't look for the long-term.
They may not be as responsible thinking forward, you know, what could happen. But like I said, the current plan does favor new hires, it definitely does, and if that's the goal of the Board, then it does do that. I, my opinion, and again, I, I can give you that comparison of what we have compared to what we, we will have under this, is I don't think it benefits the long-term employee as much. They don't lose a ton, I mean, but that's, they do lose some, so. On the bright side, though, long-term employees who've been here for 20 or 30 years can continue with the current plan, which is excellent.
I think we've had some good points. Second one done? Anything?
No, I think, I, I think reading between the two have been up to talk to us. I definitely think that we need to build this thing, number one, to protect the old, and also to bring in the new, but on the same token, I don't think we should be taking anything away from the employees that have been here. And I think that they're the ones that are gonna have the knowledge, and I think they're the ones we're gonna wanna keep, because they're the ones that are gonna ultimately train the younger ones coming in, for the most part. So I don't think we should hamper with, you know, making too many big changes. And I think if we go to the point that was the, you know, the point is, is the long-term disability, if do we, we have a policy, maybe we could make sure they're aware of it.
Everyone was very well aware of it when we were doing the work, so-
Okay.
People just chose not to take it.
Okay, well, I mean, that's something-
That's something you can't, you can't control.
You can't force them, right.
So if people wanna roll the dice with their health and their future, there's nothing you can do about it. That's a gamble, and they wanna gamble, a gamble.
But like someone said, you know, you could, you could build up your sick days and, and be cautious about using your sick days for long-term, if something happened down the road. I know it's not gonna get you a year, but on the same token, you could keep an eye on not blowing sick days.
Right, but I think the PTO proposal, you don't carry time over. So it's use it or lose it, pretty much. I think you have the option of rolling two weeks over into the following year, which is what employees currently have with their vacation time. But the current employees or the current policy lets you accrue your sick time. So with the PTO, you won't be able to bank it year after year to build up time if you know you're having a procedure or something.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm not in favor of. That's what I'm saying.
Bill, I just wanna clarify, the, the long, my, my, me, employees like me, Lynn, Laurie, Pat, you know, a bunch of us, we are protected under this, because we have the choice of staying with the old plan or going with the new.
Right, right, I got it.
My concern is, is when I retire, and whoever takes my spot, and if they're here 10 or 20 years, what are they, their benefits? I'm, I'm talking about 10 or 20 years down the road from today. I'm not talking about today. Today, we've protected the long-term employees with the provision that it's grandfathered.
Yep.
Okay? But I'm looking, as a resident, and potentially new employees, and we have a good employee, I want them to stay.
I agree.
And stay working here.
I agree. I think we have to try and-
Obviously, we have to study this section better.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, but this is- I mean, but this is why it's a draft, this is why it's a work in progress, nothing is written in stone. We realized that there was gonna be bumps in the road, this wasn't gonna be a smooth process. Anybody that thought it would be is, I think, was fooling themselves from the beginning. So, we obviously have a little bit more homework. We've gotta study the, the two documents, do some statistical analysis to make sure we don't harm anybody. But at the end of the day, we've gotta come up with something that works for the taxpayers of Grohlens as well as the employees.
So, we need to be upfront, are we looking to try and save money? Are we looking to try and just update? The original charge, I thought, was to update the policy and bring it up to today.
The goal is necessarily to save money. I don't think that's necessarily the goal. If it works out that way, that's great, but I don't think that's necessarily the goal.
Right.
The goal is to give the taxpayer the greatest talent that we can afford by giving them the best benefits that we can afford to be the most attractive that we can be in a very competitive environment right now between municipal and private industry. It's very difficult. The unemployment rate is about 3%. It's, makes it extremely difficult to hire good talent at any level, at any position, in any company, anywhere.
I think that in the municipal field alone, I think you're gonna get most people that would rather work for a municipal government than for private because of so many benefits they do end up having. You know what I mean? I think just being in the, in the municipal business is a lot of protection, more so than in the private industry, I think.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a 40% pay cut. It's not worth it. Private industry just pays so much better, typically, for the same.
But if you weigh the, yeah, I guess, you weigh benefits versus pay, I think that was already said. I mean, that, that goes a long way too. You gotta, I know people that do come for less money, but the benefits outweigh what, you know, I'm trying to say, so.
Sometimes.
You know? I, I mean, I don't know, like you say, this is a work in progress and we need to turn around and we need to go slow at it. But on the same token, we need to isolate more isolation of what, you know, are we trying to just re-clean up the draft? Are we trying to change policy? That's where I'm at. I mean, I didn't think a lot of it was, I definitely know that the part about the, that we've talked about, the parts that were.
Well, I think the PTO is definitely a radical departure from where we were.
Right.
Do we wanna be that radical in our departure? Maybe not. Maybe we wanna rethink the whole PTO idea and go back to the mixed buckets. Where you have vacation, you have sick, they're separate.
And you can't have.
But just, you know, adjust it so that people begin to accrue their time retroactive to the first day of employment after they've passed their probationary period. Maybe it's just as simple as something like that with the vacation, so they don't have to wait 23 months the way it's currently written.
I agree, I mean, I don't know.
Bill, I did, you know, I've been talking with the employees, we've been talking a lot about this. I mean, once we got our hands on the document, it was kind of problematic getting it at first. Denise was nice enough to provide me a copy. And to be honest with you, a lot of even the new hires and stuff weren't bothered by the PTO, I believe. It, that, that wasn't, it was just some language for the PTO, and then there's still language in there about sick time and vacation time. I think the, if you were to ask directly of some of the new hires, I think they did PTO.
Well, we did. We directly asked everyone and only you and Lynn showed up.
Okay.
So.
Well, maybe, maybe I can encourage them to, to maybe tell you whether, because obviously the new people are the ones, the ones, as it currently is five years, less than five years, would be forced to this document. So, maybe those people should ask you whether, you know, tell you whether or not they're extremely bothered by going to PTO. I'm not hearing it from the newer, newer people, just, just so that you know.
Okay.
I actually think their reaction was different. I heard, really, I'm gonna get five weeks of vacation, so the two I have now?
Yeah.
It's proposed.
Yeah, they, I don't think they were unhappy with the PTO, that's why I just wanted to make that clear. The new hires, that didn't seem to bother them too much.
But if we have a choice, or if the employees have a choice, then it's up to them to pick. If you've been here like Debbie's been here, keep the same, new people get the new plan.
Is that, can you do that? Can you do a PTO versus the other one? Or you have to have one or the other?
I'm sorry, you asking me?
He's basically saying, can we have two different buckets? A bucket of current employees and then after this date, a bucket of new employees that are.
You can, administratively, it'll be more difficult. If I have to track who's accruing what, what, who gets a sick buyback, who's getting an annual buyback, how many days you can carry over, who needs a sick note from a doctor? I mean, it's, administratively, it's much more difficult, but can it be done? Yes.
I mean, eventually, it'll all go to new.
Eventually, the old will fade.
Unless we come up with another formula to keep the current employees happy while also getting rid of the antiquated system we had in place for allowing PTO being issued.
So, say, you would say maybe someone that was here over five years, or just?
Well, we had that number, but then it went to four years or three years, I mean, there's a cutoff.
I've seen it in union contracts where everyone currently employed is under, grandfathered under the old vacation schedule. And then all new hires hired after this date fall under the new vacation schedule. Like Denise said, it's, it's an accounting nightmare, really, but it kinda gets you where you wanna go.
It gets you that fridge.
Right, because you don't harm anyone, but you've, you've kinda set up something new for, you know, this line in the sand on.
My only comment to that, though, is that I almost feel like you're penalizing the newest employees because again, they had to wait up to almost two years to get a day of vacation, when now you're gonna bring in new people that have a bucket of time to start from day one. So, now the people that are hired really within five years are now being penalized.
Right, but you said that you weren't really sticking to that, that you.
Right, but still, I mean, if you're hired.
Still not the same.
Right, if you're hired like in October, I don't give them time to follow. I mean, it's really only the first few months of fiscal year. So, I mean, I have, I mean, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there have been seven people hired in the last two years that have not gotten vacation time up front. And that's the cemetery, town hall, and library employees, that they've all had to wait.
So, at the 1st of July, beginning of new fiscal year, is everyone eligible for their entire time? Say, Joe.
So, Steve, our facilities coordinator, was hired July 15th. I told him he would have vacation time on July 1st. He's the most recent, in shock from the cemetery, he was in July. They're the most recent hires. So, in my, so they will get vacation time, everyone else will now be eligible for vacation time.
Right, but Sammy Jones, our hypothetical employee, he's been here 15 years. He's eligible for four weeks vacation, 20 days, and another 10 days of sick, that's 30 days. On July 1st, the new fiscal year, is he eligible right away for those 30 days, or is it accrued throughout the year?
No, because they accrued it the prior fiscal year.
They accrued it the prior fiscal year.
So, on July, so on July 2nd, if he quit, we would pay him for 30 vacation days because he accrued them already.
Oh, my God, we're kinda backwards to the rest of the industry, aren't we? I mean, the whole world.
That's why PTO, when we make this transition, I mentioned to you what's gonna happen to the group. So, like in the first year, if somebody wants to go on the system, technically what they should get is their time from the year before and then start accruing the PTO.
Right, so July 1st, everyone's due the time from the previous fiscal year.
Oh, man.
So, for the first year, it's gonna look, you know, on the books, there's gonna be a lot of time.
Right, so we'll have, if you go PTO, we'll have employees that get their six-week allotment and then have 30 new days of PTO.
So, it's gonna be pretty costly.
So, try staffing the town hall one-person offices with that kinda time.
Well, the transition period is paid, it's gonna be interesting.
That's, I mean, that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, when you make a big change like this, that's what happens. So, you either do it and get it over with.
I ran through our office. I went to go run through our office. It feels like happy end.
Let's get the employees to get it.
And if you were to turn around and when you hire an employee, for you to sit down and talk about their benefits and what have you, or us or whoever ends up, it has to be kind of in this document, it has to be spelt out in this document. It seems to me like we're adding a lot more. Ian, are we having a headache of trying to keep the offices staffed?
Again, I mean, that is the problem with one-person offices. I mean, people take vacation, they're entitled to it.
Right, no, I get it.
Then people have to understand that the offices will be closed.
Right, the offices, people take vacations now.
Right.
So, the way to limit that is, you would put an exception in there that no one's allowed to take more than, with the exception of a family emergency, medical situation, no one would be allowed to take more than two weeks at a time without advance notice, so that we, you know, those would be covered. People take vacations now, so I imagine at least a week at a time, some offices are empty. I mean, if you have one person on vacations, right? So, who staffs them now?
They're just closed.
They're just closed. So, really, we can put language in there that limits it to one week at a time, no more than two, without, you know, two months or three months prior approval unless there's a medical or family emergency. And in those situations, it is what it is, I mean.
I think that's a simple fix. That, we could, we could do that tonight, that's a simple fix. That's not the, that's not the big fix. I mean, that's a simple fix, but the big, the biggest situation is where we wanna go.
Well, the biggest fix right now is you've got people accruing in arrears.
That's my point. And that's if you were to go to a PTO.
If you go to a PTO, they would get all of the time at once.
Right.
The old time that they accrued and then the new time, yes.
Which is also gonna be, not that I'm trying to say they don't deserve it, but it's also gonna become costly for the employee time.
That first year will be the problem. After that, the problem goes away. The first year, yes.
Right, and, and we have probably 50% of employees that have six weeks, and then we have 50% of employees that will be on the lower end, you know, the two weeks. So, I mean, there are still a significant number of people that will have six weeks of time accrued and then getting 30 days of PTO.
If they take them.
And if we stay with the policy we have now and just kinda cleaned up the verbiage and what have you?
That might be, that might be what it takes.
What?
That might be what it takes to make it.
But is anything, are the present employees, by staying where they are now, are they losing anything from staying with the existing policy?
The existing employees, no. Again, it goes back to trying to attract people.
Okay, so we're good there. Now, trying to attract people, when you write up their job description and what have you, when you go to hire them, that could be, you could put ingredients in that part of it to make them wanna come here too.
We really shouldn't, I mean, that's not the way it should work.
It should work for everyone.
You have, that was an exception.
No, no, but I'm saying, I'm not saying money, you're not offering them more money.
Right, but we shouldn't be giving benefits to different people at different amounts based on when they're hired and what they're hired for. I mean, that's why we have a policy, that everyone's treated the same, everyone gets the same benefits.
And I'm 100% on board with that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the job description or that, you know what I mean? Like we got a town planner, or we got a conservation agent, you know what I mean? It's jobs that they're gonna wanna come to the town because it's.
Right, but, but again, how, how are you gonna have someone quit their current job where they have vacation time and say, well, now you have to wait a year and a half before you can get time with us? No one's gonna wanna leave, unless we're paying them a ridiculous amount of money. No one's gonna wanna come here and lose vacation time if they're working in another town that has vacation time.
We just.
Or, we continue to make individual exceptions to the rule, which makes her job even more of an accounting nightmare, right?
I'm not criticizing at all.
Right.
I'm not.
But the more individual things we do.
You have to, if you, we just did it, we had someone come in, we sat down, we negotiated a contract. Person had a reason.
We didn't negotiate a contract, he does not have a contract.
No.
He falls under the personnel policy.
We negotiated a.
We negotiated with him.
Job offer.
Him, her, whatever. And they needed to get sick day right away. We accommodated to get that person to come here because we wanted that person, that's all I'm saying. So, we may have that situation down the road.
Right, no, I agree, but that's not the way we should be handling it. We shouldn't be negotiating with every person individually based on their specific needs. It should be, this is what our vacation time is, our sick time is.
Unfortunately, it comes down to that because the person that was in front of us needed that vacation.
Right, no, I.
So, that ends up on our lap, no matter what you do. So, you cross that road when you come to it, I guess, you know what I mean? I don't know. I don't.
No, but that, that happens in, in private sector all the time. The person applies for a job and has already made vacation plans with his family, he has, you have so much, you know, I take a job example, I'm gonna get three weeks vacation. Gee, I already made plans to take a vacation in July, is that a problem? No, it's not a problem. I don't get an extra week vacation, I get four weeks vacation that week, I still get my three. That, that week is, is coming out of my time. It's loaned to me, basically, but I'm gonna, gonna pay it back by working the rest of the year. So, I'm, it, it's not that we're giving anybody anything special.
You're giving access to it early, but the amounts.
That's all, exactly right, you're giving access to it early to accommodate the person to take the job or whatever, help them take the job. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you change this policy to every individual thing.
The way it's currently written, we'd be giving him almost two years of advance.
I understand that, and I'm not for that at all.
Right.
I'm not.
That's gonna make it difficult to attract top talent. But if we changed it to read the way we were just talking about, now everybody comes in and this is the policy, and now it makes sense for the fellow we just hired, it makes sense for everybody else that comes down the road. One policy for everyone.
Well, I, I don't think since the years that I've been on the, on the Board of Selectmen that we've had somebody come in and apply for a job and back out because they were going from three weeks vacation to, to nothing for the first couple of years. I haven't seen that yet.
It's happened, we just, they haven't come before the Board of Selectmen because they don't make it to the final round. Every one of the first interview asked what the benefits are. Every single person I've interviewed asked, and I provided them a copy of the personnel policy. So, the question has come up, and it came up in the last round of interviews I did. They wanted to know specifically what benefits they got.
So, what did you say?
Correct.
So, that being said, if you stay with the existing policy and, you know, clean up the verbiage or whatever, and then we're able to have the ability, like we've been doing, stay with what we've been doing as far as hires.
I don't think you should be scared about going to PTO, because I don't think like somebody like myself is gonna choose that PTO schedule and lose my sick leave buyback, okay? Because you're not gonna get full. So, just to get that, ooh, wow, I can get a whole bunch of time in that first year. I don't think you're gonna speak too much of that. Maybe you will, I can choose to speak, but that's a one, it's a short-term, one-year problem that will go away. If you want to leave it as it is, which that's up to you guys, you at least have to fix it, like Denise said, and change the language back so that people accrue time and can take time at whatever period that you guys stay. Be a probation of 90 days, 30 days, six months, whatever you set that time to be.
That's what I'm, that's exactly what I was trying to say.
Yeah, I think we should contemplate that.
I think the final answer is, is getting late, I think we all need to reexamine that and come up with some better ideas. It's to give us two weeks to kinda mull over what we've heard and contemplate what they have. And I'm gonna try to get together with you Denise and run some numbers, just so I understand the.
I'm in here a day and a half. So, you will not be getting together with me.
Can Caitlin give me numbers? I mean, statistical, I wanna do.
Caitlin has nothing to do with the personnel.
Should you be heard, hospital number?
Yeah. All right, I'll figure out a way to get the data I need. And then better understand the ramifications. What we don't wanna do is, obviously, we wanna prevent against unintended consequences of our actions that could be detrimental to our cause. We'll avoid that at all costs, right? So, we'll be diligent and slow in this process, I think, just to make sure that we get it right. So, if we move along. So, if we move along, uh, we have some sample job descriptions of fire chiefs and discussions of hours and salaries. So, we're all over the board here as far as salaries, I see. Some are even hourly. Yeah. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, some of the towns look like they're quite a bit larger than us. Some of the towns were right about the same, or even slightly smaller.
Yeah, I asked for towns under ten thousand population. I always had a few that are over that was not, so I included it, but, um, that was my request was towns of a thousand.
Were we like seven thousand?
Yes, sixty.
Sixty-seven?
I don't know how you wanna discuss this still, but I did read through most of the meetings. I think it was the Wyndham job description.
So, it's the last one.
Yeah, thanks. There's a, there's a, there's a line in here that says, "Response to or takes charge of all emergency calls according to a departmental incident command protocol." I thought that was pretty demanding. Takes charge. And they also, there's another line that says, "Rights grants to improve departmental resources." I don't know that the other ones didn't have that information in there, but that's just, those two things just catch my eye when I was scanning through these.
It seemed they all were pretty close, I think we could go with any one of them and be pretty happy.
I just see most of them have in-house ambulance service, so...
Well, we'd take that out.
Yeah, we'd take those kinds of stuff.
Obviously. But now we need to come down on hours and fixing some kind of salary.
I don't think we should put hours to it. I think we should just say the amount of money and do the job. Ed said that in our last meeting, I think it was a good point. And the other thing is, is, um, we talked about last meeting of the current position versus what we need to find. Do we have a, we don't know until we have the amount of money we're offering.
Well, that's why I gave you job description stuff, qualifications would be in there, it depends on what you guys are looking for.
Right, but if you, let's just say you would take Newberry, you're not necessarily gonna offer what Newberry's paying. I mean, you might use this as a job description and then say, "We're only offering X amount of dollars."
Yes. Correct.
Or do we go the way Westbury doesn't, paid by the hour?
I think you're gonna get in a similar situation to what you're getting by the hour.
Yeah, it's quite possible.
In the weak side, Newberry is about forty-six dollars an hour. Is that right, about? My math is correct, forty-six? And if we did that, uh, twenty to thirty hours of what we're thinking, we'd come in at about seventy-two thousand.
Thirty-five to sixty, so I put seventy thousand in the budget as a place for them. And you'll see, or if you flip documents, when we get there, right now, in order to balance the budget, I'm recommending cuts everywhere else. So, if you want to go higher than that number, then we need, I need to cut elsewhere.
Does that include benefits?
No, I had to increase the health insurance line, I increased the retirement line, those things to include that. So, that's above the seventy thousand.
That was just a similar-sized town. And then, based on that hour rate, came up to be about seventy-two, so these thirty hours would be part of it, like in the week ago.
And Mike, to that point, I think obviously, we may cast a Mary Mack, you bring Wyndham, they're all the same rate. West Boylston's not fine.
Sterling is, Sterling has that many people, I thought that was smaller. Actually, they probably have more, more than Sterling.
Ian, you've got to work, I mean, Sterling has that and, and, and one admin. But they have, they do have an ambulance service, so the ones that don't...
Yeah, I think you're...
You can't even compare that.
I think you're looking at about seventy-two, I think you're looking for somewhere around thirty-five. That was a recommendation from the, uh, study, right?
Thirty-two, yeah.
Yeah, about thirty-two, I think.
Was the thirty-two with or without the admin?
Without the start.
They recommended an admin, but I don't, I don't see it right now. Again, I, I think a lot of it is a function now, it's a function of how busy they are, right? The more calls you get, the more paperwork you have, the less, the less paperwork. So, I would think the number of hours is directly a function of the number of calls they receive.
But I don't know that the admin would do the calls, that's really like the command. The admin, you're talking like payroll, accounts payable, fire...
I'm talking to paperwork in general.
But you're saying that there are more calls and more paperwork, more the admin has to start to follow the paperwork.
Or the more the chief would have to do, if there's no admin, right? So, the number of calls go up, the paperwork, the administrative duty goes up.
I don't know that that would really correlate, because again, you're gonna have payroll and accounts payable, and you're gonna have those regardless of whether you have one call or whether you have twenty-five calls.
So, that stays the same, no matter what.
It's just a matter of printing reports and doing your bills and things like that.
So, what's add, what adds to that, that paperwork? What would add to that? To that, uh, those duties?
Yeah, but the person would be writing grants, the person might be looking at new equipment. I mean, there's, there's so many different roles that chief would be playing, I'm sure. But again, we don't even have the per, a person in that position right now. So, I think whatever you give them, I'm sure they're gonna fill those hours, no problem. Between the admin, between equipment, between writing grants. I mean, I think that person is going to turn around and have no problem filling whatever hours.
Easy.
And my point is that, what I was gonna say is, if we went to the dollar amount, this is a work in progress. Maybe when we talk to them the second year, we have a better feel, we can give them more money. I, I mean, I don't do it one year, I don't know how you, if you can...
Well, we can't give anybody more money until we find more money, so...
I'm just trying to talk it through, but, um, you can't offer something, you don't have the money, I got it, I got that. But we need to have the position filled, and we need to get someone in place to do the job. We know we're paying X amount now, we gotta find forty, fifty thousand more possibly. It's gonna be a tough, it's gonna be tough for the first year or so, but I mean, it's gotta be done. Throwing pains, it's gotta be done. So...
I agree, so do we advertise the job for seventy-two thousand?
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even go that much myself.
Well, make a suggestion.
I was gonna say sixty-eight, sixty, sixty-five to sixty-eight. I know it's way below everybody else, but we're, we're in... You know, like, we just did it. We did one round, and then we had to go do a second round, we ended up with a guy in the first round. So, I mean, are we gonna find somebody? Yeah, I, I don't think you're gonna find a guy making, wanna make a career out of it for that kind of money, but you may find someone that's a retiree, or someone that is looking for a good second-time job, I don't know. I don't think you're gonna find someone looking, making a career. You're gonna look, if you want someone to make, wants to make a career out of a fire chief, you're gonna pay in between ninety and a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifty, whatever.
Right, but the problem with that, we can't have someone that's making it a second job if we want someone here five days a week during the day.
I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm saying they're going to be here, they're going to be here for the time, but I'm saying, at the money that we can come up with right now, they're not gonna take this as a, as a career, say. You know what I mean, like they, you get what I'm getting?
A single job.
Huh?
They're not, they're not gonna take it as a single job.
All right, and I don't think, I think you're right, we have to make sure that they, no, not a single job, but someone that's already moved on to, into their life, or they don't need that money. You know, that's what I'm getting at, I guess.
Well, you, you can't, you're not gonna be able to get somebody that's a, that's a retired, uh, a retired fire chief out of the state, I mean, as far as hours. So, whatever you, whatever it is, it's going to be a training ground. You're gonna train him, he's gonna gain experience, and he's gonna move on to another department. And we, we become a, we'll become a training ground for a bigger department. But that's, uh, that's the nature of the beast today. So, what was your recommendation as far as, as pay?
I was saying sixty-five to sixty-eight.
Yeah, put her out of that, true.
Mike? The rate, the rate is seventy-two. If you do a similar-sized town. The budgeted amount is seventy.
Seventy, seventy-two, then?
I was gonna say sixty-nine or seventy, at least we'll stay within the budget. I propose staying in the budget and see what happens first.
Yeah, that, that would be a...
Well, the budget has to come in, it's whatever you guys vote, so...
It is.
It's just my recommendation to balance right now.
Right.
I have a balanced budget.
Right now, you have a, you have a number of seventy.
I have a number of seventy.
So, anything we go over just increases the deficit. Anything under takes it away.
How much, how much of a situation is it going to be if you go to the seventy? As far as cutting, is it, is it major cuts to get to there, or, I mean, what?
Well, the cuts not really as a result of seventy thousand fire chief position.
No, you have to find the money, is what I'm saying.
Right, but it's not just because, it's because of other increases that we have to cut across the board.
So, let me reframe what I just said. So, the cuts that we're gonna make for everything, is it gonna be major this year? It's gonna be major?
Every department is being cut in one way or another.
In years in the past, we've thought we've had a cut in, but then when it rolled into the time, we, we cut a little...
Yeah, I mean, we still, we don't have state budget, we don't have health insurance, we don't have liability insurance, we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns still. So, could something change in the next two weeks? Sure.
Do we have to find a number from schools?
We have the number, they're supposed to vote tomorrow night.
They'll perk them up, they're at schools, he's lifting his head up.
I will say, that's one of the reasons we have to make some cuts. It's not a very good year. So, you know, anything could change. I don't have Whittier's number yet, although that's not a huge number anyway, so, yeah. It's a work in progress until, right up until town meeting, until we have all the unknowns figured out. I put seventy in to try and have a working number.
Essex Regional?
We have that.
So, if we, if we went...
And that's a huge increase.
Last, last job description, we, we had a five thousand dollar difference. I think, didn't we go ninety, ninety-five, or eighty-five, ninety, whatever it was? Don't lock ourselves in on a fine-tuned number.
Arrange.
If you're gonna advertise it, you advertise it for what is budgeted, and then if we have to come back and find something to...
But if you advertise it for seventy, and then if you went sixty-five to seventy, then...
Yeah, whatever, under the budget.
A little room, I guess, I don't know.
But, you know, if we have to go...
You advertise a range.
Right, we're not locked in at the seventy.
But I would say that the, the higher end would be the budgeted.
I, I don't think we can exceed seventy unless we get a real rock star in here that's, you know, absolutely gonna, you know, carry the trucks on his shoulders down to the fires.
And, and we're not gonna get this advertised before you go out, I don't think.
Well, we don't have its final job description, so...
Well, if we pick one tonight...
You can pick one, it won't be before I go out, but it won't be, I mean, I can certainly work on it from home.
So, we could submit individually our proposals for a job description?
Sure.
You could put them together into one, even while you're out, kind of on your spare time? On your mending time?
Has anyone looked at them yet, or no?
Yeah, I looked at the one I was...
That's what I had, I had them.
Yeah.
I think Mary Mack is pretty close, one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, you certainly can, and if you want to give them a writing, Caitlin can scan them to me, whatever's easier. Could email.
Well, the one I had...
So, if we, so if we make notes on the documents you gave us, and then scan them to Caitlin, she can kinda...
You can scan them just to me, and I'll take care of it.
And then you can tabulate them and kind of put something together.
So, I'd like, I definitely liked one of them, and, and I was saying sixty-five, seventy. I was saying sixty-eight, but sixty-five, seventy for me, so...
Yeah, I mean, probably adjusting to the things that don't fit us, but I think the overall outline for one of them is probably the better one that I, that I think. With that same range of sixty-five to seventy, I think.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think Wyndham, they didn't have any of those, I don't think, did they? I don't remember.
They have basic ones.
Basic, right, yes.
You know, I'm just thinking, the last time we went for a range, they went right to the top.
Well, they are always going to. So, should we... It's gonna happen when you put a range.
Should we advertise at sixty-five, knowing that we can go that way, but we don't have to put it out there right away?
I don't think you're gonna give any takers, I think even sixty-five to seventy, you won't give any takers.
I think you're gonna end up at seventy, I guess.
Yeah, actually, honestly, you're probably gonna end up over it. Well, you gotta start somewhere.
You gotta start somewhere, yeah. So, we've got to get something posted, and we've got to decide, so...
So, I'll use one of them to start, and then you guys, if you have comments or things you want.
So, if we want to edit, Wyndham, we can contact Denise.
Yeah.
So, we, should we put that in the form of a motion, Denise?
So, I'll make a motion that we go through the job descriptions and get them over to Denise in that we're gonna use the figure of sixty-five to seventy for the dollar amount toward a new chief, fire chief. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the matter?
Is there still a discussion? Is it okay if I discuss, or?
Uh, not really.
No?
This is just a motion between the board, sorry. So, we have motion and a second, is any further discussion? All those in favor? So, we'll go with that and see what happens, and see what we catch. Uh, next item is the quarry apartments at Sewell Street. So, as I'm sure you know, um, the project has taken a different turn.
Yes.
Much to my chagrin. I, to be honest, I wish I better understood the nature of the change. But I guess to each his own. So, who'd like to begin that discussion?
So, may I, actually, again?
Sure, you can.
So, as a result of the applicant filing directly through the Department of Housing, we, as a town, have the opportunity to provide comments for their review. Now, council has said, "Take that with a grain of salt, any forty B project where we're not even close to our threshold is going to be approved at the state level." But it would help the state and the zoning board when they go through the comprehensive permit process to have all of the comments documented. I've heard from police, water and sewer, conservation. I think the planning board's gonna discuss it tomorrow night, the Board of Health is meeting tomorrow night to discuss it. So, we've had a bunch of concerns come in that have been sent to council. She will then consolidate them all and provide a concise response to the application. There is a site visit tomorrow, four boards and committees in departments at ten AM. Depending on the outcome of that, council said we may look for an extension of our response time if a lot can involve it. But as of right now, the response is due to the state next week. So, for this, it's the board, it's for your individual concerns or comments that you might have that you want to have documented through this process. So, I did, I sent you all the link to the full application, I printed up for you just sort of the map... So, I did, I sent you all the link to the full application, I printed up for you, just sort of the map, the overview. But I did send the full application, if you wanted to read through and see much everything that went into it.
Two hundred and fifty pages?
Yes. So, now I will turn it back over to you.
The meeting at ten o'clock tomorrow morning, that is at?
At the site.
At the site.
And there is quite a large group from town down, I know most boards and committees are funding at least one of them. There should be a lot of them.
Bill, you're going, right?
I as well.
Are you going, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, you could, no, you could all go, that does not need to have a, it's not an open meeting with the site, does it? So, you're free, you just can't discuss it amongst yourselves, but you're all free to go if you want to.
Yeah, I'm planning on, I'm planning on going.
Do we just list our concerns, or issues that we want hired out, or?
I believe basically it's a list of our concerns over the proposed project, is my understanding.
Yes.
So, would anyone care to start?
Well, my only concern is why, when the applicant originally came before us, it was gonna be, you know...
Friendly for you.
Well, not before that. Before that, it was going to be a project that was gonna be possibly commercial and...
Or industrial.
Industrial, they were gonna fill the quarry in, and that was gonna, they were gonna work with us, and I think...
Right, but the state's not gonna care about that. That has nothing to do with the project.
So, we asking the concerns for tomorrow, but they just asked me to tell my concern?
No, I know, but I'm just, this is the concerns for the actual application through the state. The state's not gonna care what he said to us beforehand. It only matters what he filed with the state, so, so I understand that concern from you, but the state's not gonna care about that, unfortunately.
I thought he was asking about tomorrow for the meeting, but...
No, it's the same, they won't care about that tomorrow either, 'cause he filed a specific application on forty...
Really not much he can really say about it then, because no one really cares. So, what's the sense of wasting our hard air about it?
Well, I'll give you, for instance, so the police have concerns about traffic and sidewalks and bus stops.
Right. I have a concern that a hundred and ninety-two units, if we just generate one point five cars times a hundred and ninety-two units, we're talking approximately three hundred more cars hit that road in front of A.W. Chesterton at eight o'clock in the morning, at five o'clock at night, on a road that's ill-equipped now to handle the traffic it has.
But is that something the state's gonna let us talk about?
Yes, so those are, those are the types of concerns. So, we will be asking to do traffic studies of the exit of Sewell Street. We actually asked them to do a study at school in Salem Street, because that intersection is bad as it is, and then you're adding more, more volume to it.
Right, we have a high-traffic area, because that is where the closest to the crossing, if it's a school, is.
But I was also told you can't even talk about the kids entering our schools.
You cannot. Under forty-B, the number of students added to the school district is not up for discussion. That cannot be part of our discussion.
Any idea what the length from, from Salem Street to, into, into the project, how, what's the distance, any idea?
I don't, when they came before us, it was pretty significant, so they would have to add a bus stop in the complex.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if it's over a mile, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to run a, a bus in, and it doesn't look like there's any way for a school bus to turn around if they go into the whole project.
No, but I, and that's one of, one of the items that the police have asked them to look at. They have said it will fit a fire truck going around there, so I don't know what the difference in size between a fire engine and a...
Was there a concern about the actual property line?
The width of the road.
Right away.
The width of the road.
Well, Sewell Street is a private road, it's not a town-owned road, neither is Nelson Street. Those are both private ways, so they're not public roads.
But it's probably next to it, I think, there would be issues with Mr. Ryan, or something like that.
Well, he owns, so the way private roads are, they own to the center of the street. So, all the people on that street own the street, we don't own it.
So, if it's a private road, then we really, we really can't talk about the roads because it's private, so we're now back out on the Salem Street and talking about the, the road starting...
We can still discuss the fact that it's a narrow, private road, and how is he gonna get traffic and school buses and fire engines and police trucks?
Well, that's what I just started saying, is it, is it a full-width road? Can we, can we have that conversation with?
Yes, we can have that, but it's a private way, so he's gonna have to make accommodations with the abutters. He's not coming to us and saying, I need to widen the street. He has to go to the people that own that road and say, I need to make it wider.
Well, and what's the possibility that if this, if it gets approved, and after the project's all completed, and the guy, they say, well, I'd like to make this a public way, and we should have some say as far as the composition of the road, so that it, it can sustain heavy equipment, like, like one of the largest fire trucks, delivery trucks, as well as a school bus, 'cause if it's over a mile, you're gonna run a bus in there. And just looking at this, I, you know, you don't wanna back, you're not backing up a school bus. A school bus gonna, gotta be able to make a, a circle, and I don't really see, looking at this, where, where that's gonna be able to take place.
And I just wanna comment on that point, so now that we no longer have an elected road commissioner, it's this board that approves a public way to go to town meeting. So, actually, on your next agenda, you have one coming before you, and that, you would discuss those types of things, and then you would approve it to go on a town meeting.
Because, because once, once, once a private road gets turned over to a public way, we're responsible for all the maintenance of it. Well, so if Nelson and Sewell Street are, are private ways, we're not responsible for their, for their upkeep, or potholes or plowing. So, I, I can see, I'd like to see what the composition of the road's gonna be, if it, at some point, they decide to, to run, make it a public way, and also, what about, what about trash pickup? If this is in a private way, are they gonna pick up trash? Are they gonna pick up recycling? You know, recycling is getting expensive to, to pick up. Is this a, an area where the town is responsible for, for picking up the rubbish and recycling, or do they do their own?
I would assume it would be similar to, like, Whitestone, we do not pick up, I think we pick up their trash, we don't pick up their recycling.
So, if you were to go back to my point, the fifty feet, we have, do we have any say to say you have to build that piece that comes onto Salem Street at fifty, at a normal-width road, or we don't, because it's a private way?
Again, we do, but then he has to work with the abutters to try and make that happen.
That's not our problem, that's not our problem.
Right, and that's, those are the concerns of police, that I don't know how you're gonna get cars a parking, and with the auto body at the end, and emergency vehicles, and... Yep, yep, so that is one of our concerns, is the road we don't feel is wide enough to accommodate that type of traffic.
First responders in fact is probably permanent, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and if that's gonna be his headache down the road, to figure out what he's gonna do if we say we want that, but my point is, can we say that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that's my, that's my...
We can say that as a legitimate concern, that we're presenting to the state that, you know, these are our concerns with this project.
Right.
I think, I'd like to see a, a second means of entrance or egress. There's only one, there's only one entrance here, that can create a problem.
Yes, and I believe, as of right now, he was not planning to come back down Nelson Street, because someone else owns the parcel at the end of Nelson Street.
I know that was one of my major concerns when he first approached this board with this project, that there were no, there was no other form of egress from that particular site than dumping it all on Salem Street in front of A.W. Chesterton.
Right, so going back to that point, that if you don't have two means of egress, you really need to have the right-width road in and out of it. You have to have that, I mean, especially if you're gonna have, you know, cars, and like you said, how many cars will be leaving here when Chesterton and all that, I mean, that sounds like it's already been taken care of through the police anyway.
How about resources? It sounds like the roads are all, are all good to it, but how about resources such as water, electricity?
Yeah, so the light department actually provided some comments. So, the water could be run to the site, again, he would need to get easements from the owners of the road. It's not our, it's not a public roadway, so he'd have to work with the abutters to dig up the road and run water.
But he's tying in Salem Street?
But water, yes.
So, that's our street?
Yes. As of right now, in the plans, there is a proposal, if you look at this front map, this white block here, that is a proposed wastewater treatment plant. From our understanding, he, they do plan to still have discussions with the sewer department to see if they are going to run sewer to that location, but as of right now, in these plans, they are proposing a wastewater treatment plant.
I'm more worried about the other end. Right now, especially during the summertime, when we don't have a lot of rainfall, we notice a lot of towns around us, mandatory, no outside use of water. How will a hundred and ninety-two units impact the water resources in this town to, I mean, are we gonna run into potential water shortages?
Yeah, so Tom happens to be here, and I know that was one of his concerns, and the points that they addressed, the amount of water. We could certainly ask if he, I didn't realize he was still here, but...
Well, these things are our concerns as well, so if you could shed some light on, and help us better understand, is this going to impact our ability to provide water in abundant ways that we've done in the past? If we bring on a hundred and ninety-two units, is...
The, the state gives Grove and, and other municipalities a certain amount of water they can take out, it's a water withdrawal permit. So, we just can't take out as much water as we want. It has to be monitored, and that's reported back to the state on an annual basis. Grove is in pretty good shape, they give us a buffer, but this would probably eat into that buffer, so it's a one hundred thousand gallons a day. We're, we're permitted for point four million gallons a day. We've been seeing a curve just because of weather patterns, of it being a little bit on the low side, but when you average it out. But if there's additional development in town, I mean, it's, it's obviously gonna be an impact. I don't know what they're figuring for a calculation on a hundred and ninety-two units, how many per capita that is. But roughly sixty-five gallons per capita per day is what your allowance, or is a good number to kinda, a ballpark to use. I did some quick math, it's, I mean, I think you're gonna be okay, but is it gonna eat into it? You know, it will.
But that's a hundred and ninety-two units, that's not a hundred and ninety-two people.
Correct.
Right, so that could be two, three, four people in some units.
Right.
So, now you're looking at three hundred, five hundred people in one summer.
So, that's like forty thousand gallons a day, or something like that. And we have a buffer of a hundred.
So, that's forty percent of our buffer is gone.
Correct. But you could also lobby the state for additional water. So, if, if you see growth, then that's something that we're gonna wanna do.
Well, we can, we can, we can ask the state for more water, but if God doesn't give us to it, the state, I'm afraid, is gonna be tapped out too, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, there's a, Grove has a large aquifer.
Right.
So, there's, there's water available. But we also have challenges, you know, with our current sources too. So, we're, we're currently looking to do a study and find out where the next well's gonna go in town. So, it's, it's obviously legitimate that, you know, you have concerns about how much water you can extract from the ground and where we are. Right now, how do I feel? If it came on tomorrow, could we deal with it? Probably, but we'd be a little stressed. You know, I would feel a little bit better if I knew where that next well was going, and everybody knew that, and we had funding for it, and we knew, you know, it takes a, takes a while to bring like something like that on, you know, it could be four or five years. So, it's a plan, that's why we wanted to stop the planning now, and, and looking forward for the future.
Is that, now that, when we sat down with them before, it didn't seem like, I don't remember hearing about a filtration plant or whatever, pump station, whatever they're doing.
All the waste.
Yeah, is that totally just using that to pump into your system, or is that totally on their own?
That's on-site.
So, you think they're gonna go that route now, rather than...
I think they would rather see the project probably permitted with sewer. I would think if he would, you know, that would be their preference. It's a ways off, you know, it's white, it's behind Whitestone, so it's...
Right, so this here is just a backup, more or less, on, on behalf of them?
He's presenting the project with no sewer.
So, it's changed, since...
Well, I, I, we never saw anything with sewer, they just talked about it being available, and it's not readily available out, out on Salem Street. You know, it's, it's quite a ways off, so...
In our last meeting, they stressed that they still have an appetite to discuss sewer, but I think for the purpose of submitting a plan, they submitted it with a self-sustaining.
Yeah, because it's not there.
I think if he gets sewer, it's gravy, but he's got a plan for it without it, because it doesn't exist.
Right, do you know, I mean, this system wasn't, would that be something hard for the conservation people to put through? Are these pretty easy systems to get put through?
Honestly, Bill, I'm, I'm not sure. For one, it doesn't have any detail in it. I know that, you know, there are large systems like this that exist, I mean, large developments like this that exist, and, you know, they don't have...
Pulls down into our aquifer ultimately?
Well, it's, it's a recharge, you know, so it's... I think it's, it's probably...
It's self-contained, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's all self-contained.
Oh, okay, so it's not like a, a leach system or anything, it's all self-contained?
No, I believe it would leach out, but it'd be no different than a, a big, large, you know, private sewer system, septic system, really, is what it's gonna be.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure there's probably a different treatment process to it, but I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Well, that's, that's for the, and other people down the road.
Yeah, but he definitely has an appetite to bring sewer to the project.
Mike, you had more?
The, back to the water supply question, the main line on Salem Street, is that sufficient enough to tap into to run a line out to the project this size?
It is. There's plenty, there's plenty of water out there.
So, that's the, the volume isn't gonna be an issue then?
Logistically, it'll work. We would prefer it be a loop system, so we would prefer that it would go in and come out on Nelson's, come out, come off of Nelson Street.
Right.
And you just get better water quality overall, you get better flows, but as Denise said, you know, it's private, both of those entrances, or one of the, the main entrance going in is all private.
But could you say that that's what you wanted, or you can't?
I did say that. Yes, sir.
Could he, he actually could put in his own, his own well to service this, service this complex?
He cannot, because he's within five hundred feet of the water main. So, I believe he has, I believe that project this size, he has the time.
Now, now the technical question.
Yep.
The five hundred feet, front of the project, back of the project?
I'd have to look into that. I, I have to see...
Because it's certainly the back of the project is over five hundred feet.
I think it's the property line. I believe it's property line to where the main is. I mean, I'd have to look in the, in the bylaws, but I'm pretty sure it's, that's what it is. I'm, I'm guessing he's following...
And under a forty-B project, an unfriendly forty-B project, could he petition the state to do his own well? And because, because now, now he's not, now he doesn't have to abide by the bylaws.
Well, I don't think he could get the fire protection anywhere near that, so he has to have, anything that's public health and public safety, from what Amy had told us, you know, he wouldn't be able to waive from, so I think that'd be a really high sell, I don't know that he could do it, 'cause he just wouldn't have the fire protection.
Well, and of course, what, what my point is, if he, if he decided to do that, he's, he's, he's basically upstream from our wells. If he did that, would it take away from some of the capacity in our wells?
Uh, I don't think it would. I, I don't think it would affect it like that, and I'm not so sure it's even really feasible, like, you know, honestly. It's because of the fire protection, I don't think he could do it. It's quite a bit of water.
It is, it's been done elsewhere though. Lewis Builders up in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
But they, they only run their own water company.
I mean, it's, you know, the aquifer, whether, you know, if you put a big well like that in, Havel's gearing up to put a sixteen-foot caisson across, across the river here, and we've been told that it's not gonna affect the aquifer. That's millions of gallons a day, about seven and a half million gallons a day.
And Havel told us it wouldn't affect us?
The state told me, so far.
State.
We're still working with them, but that's the plan. About twenty-five percent of that is groundwater, the rest of it is basically overboard, coming from the, from the, the river itself. So, I gave my comments to Denise, I'll be out there tomorrow. You know, it's the whole sewer thing, that's anybody's guess at this point. There's a few hurdles he would have to go through to get it up there, potentially easements that would need to be secured. Logistically, how that would be laid out, obviously, anything, anything that's, that's put into a, that's over the public way is, you know, we own it. The town owns it. But a private way, if that stays a private way, and we have many of them here in town, if there's a failure for any reason on the infrastructure, we just, you know, may break for it. if there's a failure for any reason on the infrastructure, we just, you know, may break for instance. We just shut it off at the street, they have to fix it inside there. And so I'm assuming that's how this project would be. Nichols Village is a good example. We end up with a utility easement basically which gains, gives you access to the infrastructure for inspection purposes and things like that.
Any other questions of our water department?
Um, good.
Thank you.
Sure.
It looks like a million dollar road there at Sewell Street, eh? We pay with gold before it's over, I think. Other concerns?
I'm sure you guys will come up with some more tomorrow.
Uh, well, will this, will this require an increase in patrol officers? Did Jeff...
Concern is a couple of things. In our conversations with Mr. Khan, who is the coordinator, yes, they do plan to allow dogs in the apartments and a lot of, you know, some of the sites we have in town that are apartments or condos, the police get a lot of, you know, noise complaints and dog complaints. So that's one thing. In addition, the chief was concerned about lights in the parking lot and security cameras as far as breaking and entering, you know, someone could get into that lot and hit a dozen cars at a time. So those were really his concerns. They don't really know is how many calls they're gonna come in or what the...
Tough to anticipate. Any studies out there that he can get his hands on that might help him kinda get a, you know, an idea on what he might be up against?
I can ask him, I don't know.
That's worth, worth the question.
They do plan to have a full-time security person, you know, during the day there. They do, there was some question on cameras where they were gonna flip them, but they do plan to have a large part of the complex with security cameras.
During the day?
They're gonna have a security company there during the day, like a management company that does the security.
Do you know who he could ask? Because he's confronted with Georgetown. Georgetown recently put in that big complex on the other side of 95. I'm sure that he would be able to get some feedback on that if that increased.
Any statistical increase, yeah. Go with the fire too.
Are they gonna do a gate, gate access to the, to the property at some point?
I would assume so, but I don't know that they've said that.
So that the residents could use a keypad or something to gain access which would keep other people, other people out?
I don't know. They do plan to have a significant amount of underground parking, but they didn't plan to have parking on-site. And we've asked them to specify where they're planning to have visitor parking because one of the chief's concerns was that people would be parking on Sewell Street and then impeding emergency vehicles or buses on the traffic. So they were trying to identify where they were gonna have visitor parking.
Oh, I don't think anybody's gonna be parking on Sewell Street, but looking at the, looking at the way this project is, they're not gonna walk that distance.
I don't know where they would park if there are assigned spaces or what.
Security guys during the day, you know...
I think that's what they, he said there was gonna be a full-time management company. I thought he said security during the day.
I know when I went to Wentworth, there was a security guard there during the day, but I didn't need them there when all the sun was out and I could see everything. It was at night when you couldn't find them that you really needed them when you were coming out of school and Mission Hill Project was just like next door and then you'd say, you'd question what was going on. Fire, is this going to require a bigger staff or more equipment? Specialized equipment, something that we don't have right now that this kind of project may require? Is this something that esteemed Chief York could enlighten us on?
Very nice.
Thank you.
Is that working?
Hope so.
All right, so as far as increase in calls with 192 units, most likely we're gonna have an increase in, in medical calls and maybe false fire calls, hopefully not actual fire calls there. And we're, we have been kinda discussing the heights of the buildings and from the plans, it's hard to really judge what the actual height is. We have a 75-foot ladder truck and these buildings are, I believe, roughly 85 from the ground to the peak. And from the distance out, our ladder truck will not be quite sufficient to make it to the very top.
Then you, with the existing equipment we have?
But, yeah, correct. And whether we can effect proper rescues, you know, from the top floor is another concern.
And those are all, and I...
I just saw your email now, but have you given me your, did you send me on the list of issues?
I did not. We, we're kind of really limited on what we could do from the plans that were provided. We probably would like a little bit more detail on what, a little better on the height and...
You won't get that at this point, though.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're very limited on what, what we can do. I know that we have the town bylaw. I believe it's, limits the heights of buildings in town to, don't quote me, 35 feet. So, I mean, I don't know how they get past that in...
Because they can request a waiver for that.
Yeah. But as far as the plans or the way they were laid out is two of the buildings, we have access to two and a half sides on one of the buildings and we have access to only two sides on another, that one up in the very back behind Nelson. But that kinda really poses an issue for us to be able to actually do our job in the event of a fire in the building.
Especially if that fire were to start in the back of those two buildings.
Correct.
You have very, you have almost no access at all.
At all. Everything's done by hand, ground ladders.
It looks like, looks like two of those buildings, the one way out back.
The one straight all the way back also.
But that doesn't have access in the rear of the building either.
We have no access to the back by, by the way the plans are laid out today. And I'm, I'm assuming that over discussion in time that there is gonna be some changes to, to meet the, you know, the fire department, the public safety side of things.
Do you guys, can you guys require that you want to have all four sides accessible?
We can, I, I can't say yea or nay on that. I can, well, we're definitely looking into that.
Anything else from our fire chief that we can...
Will you be getting me any of that before Wednesday?
Um, yeah, I will, I will get you as much as we can.
Please and thank you.
Yes.
Turnaround radius for the ladder and all that?
Yeah, we're still gonna go basically by the same radius that they use for the...
Right, roads.
For the Nelson Street development there for the storage units.
Yep.
They used the ladder, a ladder truck from another town which
Right.
pretty much is a little bit bigger than the biggest truck we have, but that gives us a little future growth in case we have to get a little bigger on our equipment.
Yeah.
If they need, if you need 85 feet to reach the roof, was there any conversation with the, with the developer to supply a ladder company that will, will reach that height?
Well, that would be great, but we, the meeting we did have was not with the, the actual, was it the developer? That we met with. That's something as, something that we will be discussing. I mean, obviously, this is something that Groveland's never seen anything like this and, you know, they, I believe that they should be helping to build up the town infrastructure, you know, and make sure that we have or assist us in getting what we need to protect that.
And the other thing is, you would think that the stops would be between the building department, like you said, our bylaws and what have you on heights of the buildings and all that. So, I mean, I think we hope we have enough checks and balances in place if we have the say and the state doesn't say, oh, no, you know?
Well, 40B, they, they can bypass, I believe, most of the bylaws except for public safety.
When someone ends up getting hurt in there and then we can turn and say, well, that was a 40B design. It wasn't our problem. That won't go, that won't go well down the road.
As long as we do our due diligence upfront, hopefully we can prevent that happening in the backend.
The hydrants in, within this structured area sufficient?
At this point, we can require what, what they have in there. Again, the water department's not sure. They, they are looking for a loop system which would give us a better, better flow than just having a straight, you know, pipe in.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you're gonna, you're gonna have a dead-end hydrant there.
Yeah, and that's gonna, that's gonna pose a problem. We're gonna have to, you know, if we need a lot of water, we're gonna have to bring from out, you know, on Salem Street. But if we had a loop system, if we can possibly get them to do it through Nelson Street, but again, that's discussion that they're, they're gonna have to have with the water department.
As you know, number one, thank you for the, the department and all the mutual aid from the other day. That was good, but...
That was a, that was a very good, very good outcome, good save. We saved a dog.
Yep, but what I was gonna say is, that being said, you saw there that you had to call mutual aid in the middle of the day for that fire. What happens if we have one here? You know what I mean? It's gonna be the same thing. We don't have enough manpower for 196 units that built into water. So maybe that start putting on full-time people, I don't know.
It's probably, you know, as we look at the study, we're probably gonna be looking at maybe per diem people, maybe, maybe even full-time.
Right.
But again, that's something we have to assess as we get to it. And it, you know, definitely incurs a cost to the town.
Right, 100%.
Any other questions about fire chief?
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any others that anyone has?
Underground or above-ground electric service there?
I don't think they've identified.
They haven't specified.
This is all too, this is not really a good set of plans.
No, no.
It's more of a sketch.
Very superficial.
Right.
Yeah.
And again, I think a lot of our departments that, hopefully they'll weigh in if they can on that kind of stuff too.
Right, like I said, the light departments, yeah, the light department's already sent their list of concerns and...
They did.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was next on my list is how will the, that's a lot of power. Do we have the capacity?
In our initial meeting, he didn't think it was a big deal, but then weren't they talking about another transformer or something? Or something?
Any other concerns the board has that they wanna bring up at this time? You'll be there tomorrow, Bill?
I'll be there.
Slick and Watson will be there. I'll be there. We can, after this meeting, should other things come up, we can send them off to you individually, not as a group.
Correct.
So please don't copy each other if we do come up with something, so it's...
Yeah, depending on, I have a meeting before that, so depending on what time that ends, I may be there as well. So if you have concerns, you can tell me right now.
Okay, great. And so if we're ready, we'll move on to town survey results. Can kinda tell you, some people do. So there are some interesting results, I'll say that. Would like to begin the discussion on what we see.
It seems like there was a lot of support for a town manager. Also, a lot of support for combining the highway department, water, and water, and grounds, and maybe considering one department, public works. Something that people were too enthusiastic about, many of them.
It looks like it, not much, not much support for a senior center.
Senior rec center, yeah, that surprises me. I thought there would gone more, more support as a combination kind of unit.
No, there are actually a lot of comments on that question of we've already voted on this, why is this back again?
On what was, I'm sorry, what was it?
A lot of people wrote next to that question, like we've already voted on this, this senior center.
Number six.
We've already voted on this, why is this coming back? Why are you still talking about this? There were a lot of those sort of comments with that question.
A lot of support for electronic voting at town meetings.
A lot of support for filtration plant.
That seems to be a top priority.
For a filtration plant.
Question a lot of it, yeah.
I think if you threw the number at them, that support would go way, way down. No, it's conservatively estimated about 14 to 15 million dollars. So...
Playground's was another big one.
I wish.
Open space would sound surprised.
For the Strawberry Field?
Yeah.
Yeah, not...
And rec, and rec fields was, was number two.
Was number two.
Yeah, those. And no, and no support for affordable housing at that location either.
Well, there'll be plenty just down the street if that project goes through, so I guess we don't need to add to that.
So what are we supposed to do with this?
Nothing, this was just so you guys can plan goals and priorities.
Well, originally, we did it to see...
To get a...
To get an overlay of what the, you know, we're talking about town managers at that point, but to get a, an idea what the town people are thinking, so...
Right, so just so people know, we received 442 surveys when we came to live it. I will say a couple of them have come in since then.
They're not gonna swear to statistically data.
Right, so, so we've cut off, I mean, this is it, I still have them in a folder if anyone's come in since, but they're not included in these totals. We really, we sent it out with the February 1st tax bill, the tax will due February 1st, so we gave it until March and then none of them come in was included.
And if you read, read the comments, there's one that kinda sticks out to me, listing nine and 10. Would like to see the town establish community garden lots where residents can grow their own food and flowers. Never thought of that, but that, that, that has merits.
Now, that would be an excellent use for some of the land down at Strawberry Fields.
Yeah, that's what they were saying. Man, I like the, I like the one, bring back the racetrack. Bring back the racetrack.
Well, you can go up to Loudon now and see the real race cars. It's not that far. Got some real fast-moving ones right there. That's NASCAR, isn't it? Move like a bad ass heck.
So my, my comment would be, now that we know this is in front of us, do we, we originally did it to see where we're gonna go. Does anyone wanna move anything from here? I mean, with the top priority ones, do we wanna move with it anyway? Do anything on it or just...
Well, there's one, one thing I'd like to move forward with, with the electronic voting at the town meeting. And I know that, I think Denise was gonna put together an article for the town meeting, but I, I'd almost like to see as a, as a trial run, what's it gonna cost to, to lease them for the upcoming town meeting? Any idea?
Yeah, I actually have that. Because most towns don't buy them outright, they rent them every year anyways. I think I printed it out. It was a couple thou, no, I think it was a little higher than that. I think it was like closer to seven. Because you have to get, especially so, for instance, this upcoming town meeting, you have to make sure you've had enough for everyone that planned to show up and vote on the school project. So you have to have extra ones. But I do, so town council recommended or said in order to make it a permanent part of town meeting, it has to be a bylaw. So I do have an article for the town meeting warrant for that, which means it would be approved this year and then you could implement it right after that, any town meeting going forward. I'll look it up if you guys keep talking, I'll go to my emails.
Well, I'd like to almost move forward with it for this, this town meeting. And I know it's, it's a chance that it could be voted down, but particularly the last town meeting kinda pushed me in, in favor of it based upon a couple of articles. kinda pushed me in, in favor of it, uh, based upon a couple of articles. People at town meeting, uh, they seem to be a lot more intimidated now than they used to be to vote forward or against the person, against an article. They're not gonna vote, uh, they're sitting with a friend of theirs that was strongly in favor, that, they're not gonna vote against it and, uh, alienate them, but if they, if they do an electronic voting, they can't see what another person, the person right next to them is, uh, how they're voting. And I, I think that's, I think that's something that it's, it's needed at this time.
So having the survey, does anyone wanna move forward any? Ed's already said he wants to move forward at it. I'll just use this for, uh...
Yeah, basically, I'm not sure that... I mean, I, I, I think electronic voting is a great way. We do our banking that way, we do a number of things that way, but it's odd that, you know, you're looking at statistically less than, you only had 46% that are, uh, both in favor or strongly in favor, which is less than the majority. I don't know if it'll pass a town meeting.
I honestly think, I don't think people really understood what the question was.
No.
I think people, 'cause people wrote next to it like at the ballot question, I think people, the people that don't go to town meeting don't understand what voting at town meeting really means. This is not like people at home on their cell phones voting, you know, you would get a device when you walk into town meeting. And I think people were confused by that, just by some of what people wrote next to that question.
Right, and by the low, by those, you know, statistical number of only 46.3%. Where if you look at the, uh, town, uh, question one, 61.5, we're either in favor or strongly in favor of a town manager. 61.5%, I mean, that's, that's a heavy number. Now, if it should be an attorney, it's almost split. 36.8 don't think so, 31 think so. Uh, so you've got people, I'm not quite sure, and then the biggest number was 101 right in the middle. Obviously, the number five is just... You've got really strong, um, consensus on bringing those departments together into one.
Which we're already kinda working on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We just gotta, we know we have to keep pressing forward, it's, it's, it's a, um, subject that the town people are for, so I think our energy going forward with that is definitely well worth it.
To work in progress.
May I interrupt for a quick moment? Um, so the electronic voting, it is 100 devices, um, is $8,300 for one day. Uh, two-day meeting for 200 voters is $11,780.
I'm trying to find money for a chief.
Yeah, and we need, we need more than 200.
We may, so I, I would say it's probably best to try the bylaw, and if it passes, then we can at least look into either purchasing them outright or working into a plan to budget for them every year. But when we have these types of questions, we really have no idea how many we'll need.
It, um, I, I think that, uh, if you do the, do the question, um, people are gonna need an explanation. And, and just looking at some of these, uh, responses that mention that particular one, I, I, I think, I don't think that they under, really understood what it was all about.
Well, I mean, the good thing is, at town meetings, you have an option to discuss what the question means. Excuse what the article...
$11,000 for all it carry mean?
Maybe, maybe twice a year if you have a special meeting, that's...
That's only for two, 100, 200. I mean, that's, what if we have 500 people show up because of the things that are on the warrant? That's 25,000 dollars?
You're right, I mean, in that case, I think the old-school method of raising your hand and counting...
Not only that, you have someone program a, write their own application that you can put on your cellphone and figure out a way to make it, uh, one, one, one cellphone, one vote, whatever. That's crazy.
Well, I mean, it may be worth going out to try and procure the whole amount and see what it costs to buy the stuff out.
Yeah, but then in five years, uh, they, two years...
Isn't it a bylaw change anyway?
It would be.
So why don't we start with the bylaw changing at this point, if that's what everyone wants to do, but I mean, I'm not up, if we're trying to find money for the, for the chief, we're cutting budgets and everything else, I don't...
I'm not in favor of spending $8,300 to count, uh, to 200.
Usually what happens, 100 people going there that want the project passed, so...
Right, and I don't believe with the language in the bylaw, I think it just allows electronic voting, it doesn't require it. So the bylaw just gives us that option to have electronic voting if we choose at a town meeting. It doesn't mean the bylaw passes and we only do electronic voting here, I hope. So it would give us the option of adding that in if we decided to.
Or we could look into what it's gonna cost and price it out and everything else.
Well, if, if we, if we ever come across a cost that's not prohibitive...
Right.
We might wanna go to it, but at, at this price right now, that's...
Have you ever heard of putting, um, ballot boxes in town meeting and they can go up and they put it in?
Yeah, so it's funny...
And then a girl could take and count her box, and another girl her box, and her...
So, so yes and no, so at the same time, when I talked to council about the electronic voting devices, we talked about that. So you can, um, but it requires a motion and a vote prior to a specific article.
Yeah.
And you need to have pre-printed ballots and a ballot box that's secure. So you'd have to know what question, how those ballots printed.
Right.
So he said it was really cost prohibitive to do that, but it could happen if needed.
All right.
A dozen of them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I don't know what the cost is, but...
I don't know, but free, I like, I like, I like, I like free. Free works for me.
So I think the fields have, I think definitely the fields are, are big, uh, the rec, town recreation area, expanding the field. So I think we're on the right road there. I think we're on the, you know, looks like Strawberry Fields, it's on people's minds.
Well, absolutely, I mean, you spend that kinda money, it's on your mind. But I think this definitely gives us things to think about.
Yeah.
To prioritize.
Right, well, you know where the people are thinking, they're thinking even with the, with the water filtration, you know what I mean? They're obviously not thinking about a parade, and they aren't thinking about certain things, but there's certain things they're thinking about. So this is where we should be trying to put our energy toward these subjects. That's kinda what I want.
I don't think the information's helpful.
Yeah.
There was also, uh, a lot of comments that were printed out with... Very, uh, disturbing, did you read those?
Some I found very instructive and very helpful, and others were just, um...
Mean and not helpful.
It's the opposite.
So, that's, that's part of politics.
You mean like, uh, some leadership would be better than the ineptitude we now have in the selection, dumb, dumber, and dumberest. Three stooges are greater than five, as evidenced in our present state of incompetence. A lawyer would like to present conflict of interest on lawsuits. Like that one? I would say if the person that wrote that, maybe you wanna share your name and address, just so we know who wrote it. I mean, it's easy to criticize some behind the computer.
No, I, I, I think it's great that I wasn't included in that.
That's one person's opinion.
Yeah, so I mean, if, you know, if you're so, uh, experienced and intelligent, you can have my seat for the month and just come up here and I'll sit out there and I'll criticize you. Right?
Well, I, I, I think the whole thing is, does this really help anybody? I mean, let's be honest, the easiest thing to do in the world is to sit back in that chair and criticize somebody that's doing something. Listen, there's always room on my side of the table for anybody that wants to come up, roll up their sleeves and, and, and help out. Water's great, dive in, um, but to, to put nasty comments that don't serve any purpose, don't add any value, that's fine. If you wanna waste your time, people wanna waste their time doing that, it's a free country, they've got a right, First Amendment right. Uh, have at it, knock yourself out if you think I'm gonna pay any attention to it. You've, um, you obviously don't know me very well, 'cause I just, uh, I look right over that stuff.
I, I think there's some great ideas here that some of these, some of these comments, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of these comments that are, are, are asking for cost. So obviously, excuse me, obviously, an increase in taxes is, is, uh, a lot on people's minds. Uh, additional money spent, um, cost, cost. How much will my taxes be going up?
Agreed, some of the comments are very valuable, they're, they're, they're helpful to us, and those are the ones we should, uh, focus on and, and not really spend a lot of time...
But even when, um, even when I did the survey for the business survey and everything, I now after reading this survey, the people in the town, I truly believe only care about what hits them in the locker book, number one. And number two, I don't think they're looking for a lot. I don't...
Right, but I think people have to keep in mind, our tax rate has gone down year after year after year. The assessments of the homes in town have gone up.
Right.
So, again, any changes you guys make is more than likely done within proposition two and a half, it will not impact the tax rate.
Right.
So, we talked about the fire chief, we talked about other initiatives, those are all done within the tax rate, but yes, their taxes are off over the year because the value of the homes are going up. But the tax rate has gone down the last four years.
Right, but all, 67% of our budget goes right out to the schools.
Right, absolutely.
And we're working with peanuts here.
Absolutely.
Like Mike just said, or Bill said, we're working with peanuts to come up here and do this job and your job and work with what we have. You don't have a lot, I mean, you can't even, you know, hire a chief at the right amount of money if we don't have it, you know what I mean?
Right.
So what I'm saying is, people need to realize that, and I don't think people do realize what this town operates on, what's left over from the school budget, it's not a lot. And, and, and what we operate, we do a good job for what we have, I mean, with the highway, the fire, the police, and the people in town hall, we do a good job for what we have, I think.
I agree, but, you know, there are some people out there, certain segment of society...
Right.
That they, they love to get on Facebook and they love to criticize and they love to beat you down.
Right.
And they love to tell you you're doing, you're a bad guy and you're a bad person, and you know what, you, we can succumb to that negativity, or we can focus on the positive and the long-term growth and the success of the community, and put all that negativity behind us and keep surging forward...
Right.
In a positive way, and not to be deterred by, by the garbage, uh, that, that sometimes comes along with the, with the drop, you know what I mean?
But a lot of this too, if you read a lot of this, it's saying like they don't want government to grow. But you also have to change with the time, and unfortunately, government does need to grow, you don't have to be wasteful, but it does need to grow to make things efficient, to be costly, you know what I'm trying to say?
I agree, I, I mean...
You know what I'm saying, you've gotta fight...
100 years ago, how many people were in this town?
Right.
Maybe 1,500?
But I mean, let's just take the...
Well, didn't take that kind of infrastructure to take care of 1,500 people.
But take that MRI report, from that MRI report, the bottom line was, we knew what we needed to do in the beginning, but coming out of that MRI report, what's it basically saying? It's basically saying everything that we knew and that we gotta have someone in the realm more, you know, not, I'm not gonna say full-time, but then someone needs to be there on a, on a, a regular basis. You know what I'm trying to say? So there is a thing, you're going from a part-time position to possibly some, semi-full-time or whatever, it's something we've gotta eat, but times in the town are growing and are changing, and we're gonna need to spend the money to do that, just like they're, they're saying we need a new high school. I mean, I'm not a, I, I'm not a true believer in, I'm worried that this high school now goes, it's 1968, 1970 high school, we gotta have it, we gotta, we can't teach the kids, this, that, and the other. What's gonna happen with the Bagnall School next? And then, and, and another elementary school, and another elementary school. You know, that school, that school's been, gotta be in the, I'm gonna say probably what, 70s maybe, the Bagnall? It's gotta be pretty old, so I mean, you know? It's just, times change, unfortunately. And you gotta change with the times.
Or you'll end up like a dinosaur.
Right.
You, you'd need...
Well, you won't, you won't operate precision, you know, precisionally, whatever you say.
Well, you have to adapt.
Right.
Times change, things evolve, the town isn't what it used to be 100 years ago. If we don't adapt, we'll, we'll, we won't be a town.
Just even the, even the fight of them, you can't get the volunteers, like you, you normally could get them in years in the past, people's lives are busy here, et cetera, et cetera. So what does that do? They're not, you have to start looking at putting people there on a regular basis, you know what I'm saying?
But it, it's, uh, oh, another comment that, that kinda sticks out is, uh, "We strongly support the town survey in order for the board of selectmen to hear from the residents, this is a wonderful idea, please continue to do this in the future. It's tough to make, make it to board of selectmen meeting on a regular basis, but this allows people to be heard." Uh, thank you.
Now, that's a great suggestion.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Now, maybe we can look at some of the, uh, items we, we, we looked at, the ones that really in favor, and then fine-tune another survey strictly, uh, geared toward that question, so we can even get a better understanding of where the taxpayer wants to go.
And, yeah, and most of these, uh, you look through the other, it's, what's this gonna cost? How much are my taxes gonna go up?
Exactly, that's, that...
Cost of an ultimate need for support staff and ongoing costs, uh, so...
That's right to the heart of this water filtration plant, that priority number one, 181.
Well, it's not, uh, it, it, it's not just that particular one, it's, uh, uh, and that's gonna, that would be very expensive, but...
Right.
Um, just, uh, uh, should, should Grovan have a town manager? Well, what's it gonna cost? I mean, people could say, yeah, good idea, but, uh, what's that gonna cost? What's that gonna cost the town? Uh, the, uh, another one, maybe, maybe even the electronic voting at the town meeting, uh, what's that gonna cost? But maybe the people, if they knew what it was, what these items were gonna cost, they'd have a different idea.
But now, Ed, what we, now we've got it isolated to where, what the people, we know where their direction is, now we can get the cost. Now, we can, like I just said, maybe we can start to talk about DPW or talk about some of these things that we know...
Where their focus is.
Where their focus is, now go back to them and say, okay, it's gonna be 300 and...
It's gonna be 15 million dollars, it's gonna increase your taxes by about 250 dollars a mo, uh, a year.
Right.
You still want your filtration plant.
Right. We didn't wanna waste our energy moving forward unless we knew where the people wanted to go. I think we have a pretty good idea where people wanna go, and now do we focus in on that, or do we just...
I think we focus in on...
Next step would be to give them the number they wanted or whatever, start talking about DPW, start talking about, you know, whatever they wanted to talk about, you know?
And I, I think the, uh, generator for, for the, for the Bagnall School, if it was, uh, if they knew what it would cost, and that it, it could be used as a disaster site, because they'd have a, uh, they'd have the, uh, generator for the full building, that, that might have even come a little bit higher than what it, what it was. Oh, it was pretty high as it is, I think it was second.
It was second.
Yeah, and that, and that, and that wouldn't cost, that wouldn't cost a heck of a lot, to bring that up to speed. But I, I'm surprised here on, um, number nine, that business area, uh, didn't come in a little bit higher than, than what it did. It was second, but, uh...
Number nine?
Uh, number nine, Strawberry Fields, um, business area there.
Well, at least you know how they voted, they kinda stuck with the way they voted.
Hmm.
But now, to your point, how we use the survey, is we take that question 11, and we put numbers, we put cost next to these, send that survey out and, and watch those numbers shift around.
Drop right to the bottom.
Well, I, I expect there'll be a tremendous shift in the, in, in their priorities, which again, will give us a refocus on where they really wanna see their money spent and how they wanna see it spent. I think this gives us a good idea of...
And realizing that you're only, the, the responses were under 500, and, uh, so you're only getting a response from 500, there may be, uh, as I had said before, uh, husbands and wives may, may think differently, uh, not only, not only husbands and wives, but if you've got younger voters, uh, in the family, they may have, uh, have a different idea of how they want, uh, money to be spent. So it, uh, I, it's a good start.
All certainly good ideas on how we can, uh, expand on this first step, no doubt, but I think it's a very good first step to get the pulse of the taxpayer and know what they're thinking, and, and give us some kinda direction and guide us on, on what they wanna see done. So I think it's a very good first exercise, barring a few comments. Any other kind of discussion on that? Then we will move on to...
So where do we go with it, just take it as information?
Well, I think, uh, we should study it a little more and then come back with maybe a more focused survey wrapped around some of the more strongly opinionated answers to some of the questions, such as one, which, you know, 61, almost 62% of the respondents, 6 and, more than 6 and 10, said they'd like to see a town manager. So maybe now we, we, uh, use a more laser-like focus on that, throw our cost, throw out the maybe, uh, types of job descriptions or things like that to get a better idea or understanding of what they think they want. Uh, so now we'll move on to the fiscal '20 merit increase request for facilities coordinator Steve McPherson. So my understanding is we... So, my understanding is, we hired this gentleman at a, no, I wouldn't say considerably, a substantially lower rate than what we had been paying the previous facilities coordinator. But now, this person, to my understanding, has meet and exceeded all expectations of the job description and performance. And now, it, we'd, it has been discussed to bring him up to where we believe his talents really require. Do I have that in a nutshell?
Yes. So, as I articulated in my letter, saving us money every day, things that he is handling in-house, that we used to have to pay to have companies come in at prevailing wage and take care of these things. Could be as little as changing the ballast in the police station garage, or replacing the light fixtures in the veto room that we replaced. Those things, we had to have electricians come in and take care of before at a prevailing wage rate, we didn't have anyone to do those things. So, he is saving us money, he is handling tasks, he was up on the roof of the generator shed the other night, or Thursday, fixing the, there was panel missing, or something was broken off the shed, he was up there fixing it. He will do anything and everything, he is on his feet for forty straight hours, he does not stop, from the minute he gets there to the minute he leaves. And it should be, his rate should be more equitable to what the work he's providing for us, from my understanding. So, I wish we could do it all in one jump, we just don't have the money, as I said, budget's tight. So, I'm requesting a two-year increase to bring back up to the rate that the position was at originally.
It sounds like somebody we wanna keep.
I, I think this is sending the wrong message. This, this individual done a good, doing a good job. Employed here for six months, I, I think you're sending the wrong message. We, we've got other town employees that do, do a great job above and beyond. They don't get any merit, merit increase, and this is the first time that I've seen somebody be put in for a merit increase. And, and for what the chairman had said, had said earlier, you can't give more money until we find it. And, so, you're, you're sending the wrong message to the, to the other employees here. Are they gonna resent the fact that this individual started six months ago and is already being put in for a, a couple of merit increases here? And, and, and I don't think it, I don't think it's right. He knew what the job paid, he knew what the, what the tasks were, although he didn't put in for this. I, I, I don't, I don't think it's right to, almost like a slap in the face to the employees that have been here for a while that don't, that probably deserve it and haven't got it. And it, I, I think it's sending the wrong message. So, I, I can't support this at this time. So, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no.
Can I ask, what's the difference then with the department heads, you know, supporting their staff? So, if another department head came in and asked for a merit increase, there are actually several departments that built into their budget increases in wages.
Right.
Because they haven't come before this board yet, which you are the salary-setting authority.
Right, and I think that we sent, that we set a, to the, to the town, to the, to the development heads. We, we asked for a 2% raise. Some of them would've come in at, at higher than that. But we can, we can discuss that, and the, and the finance committee can discuss that when it, when it gets to them. And I, I don't see any support on this paperwork from the finance committee.
Because the finance committee, it's in the budget, the finance committee does not set salaries, the Board of Selectmen sets salaries.
And, and I think it's sending a wrong message to the present town employees that, that this individual get a, after six months, get a couple of step raises, or merit raises.
I do wanna clarify, it's been nine months, and I could probably get your letters from all department heads supporting this.
No, I thought it was a, I thought it... Well, I don't wanna see the, from the department heads, if you're gonna do that, get it from the other town employees. The, the ones that, that, some of them probably feel that they deserve a merit raise because they, they come in every day, they do their job, they go above and beyond. And I thought it was six months, but it was six or nine months, whatever. I think he, he should fall in line with everybody else.
And I don't, I don't think there's a person in this world that, given their own device, wouldn't think they're worth more money. But it's, it's typically the person that pays them that decides whether they are or not. So, to ask the employee if they'd like more money, anybody that said no, I'd, I'd question their sanity. So, of course, you're gonna get a yes answer. Are they deserving? That's a completely different question. Of course, we all want it, but doesn't mean you deserve it.
Well, how do, how do other, how do other town employees put in for a, a merit raise that they may be deserving of it also?
I would imagine they go through the department heads. And then make the argument that I deserve more than one and a half or 2% because I've gone above and beyond. That department head either agrees or doesn't agree, then they would need to come here and sell that and say, hey, Joe Schmo has done a tremendous job in the cemetery, and it, it's not right that he should be given 2%. I, I implore the board to give him 3% because it's the guy we wanna retain. And at that point, it would be up to us to say, we agree with the department head, or we disagree with the department head, or come to some...
I think that's what we've done here. Didn't the cemetery already come through with the, with, they had a guy, then they wanted to give the guy more money, and they came before us already?
Pretty much.
My other question is, is the person that was in this position before was making the 2250?
He was at, not quite 2250, I think he was at 2150.
Okay, and...
This guy was hired at 1850.
And that reason being?
Just, we just lowered the rate to, when we put it back out to post, not knowing what we would get.
So, it's already been budgeted, according to...
I think the, the other person wasn't full-time that was here before.
We have not had a full-time, Steve was our first full-time employee.
Yeah, this is, so this is, this is a full-time position.
If he was to get, usually do a 2% on the second year, what's 2% of?
It's not much, at that rate, it didn't come to much.
Okay.
It comes to 37 cents, Bill.
Well, I wouldn't have a problem giving them the increase for one year, I wouldn't wanna go out for two years, we can always do this again next year, so. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna give them, money's tight, I, I hear what Ed's saying, I know the gentleman, I, I see what he does, I see, you know. But again, I don't wanna send the wrong precedents either, but when someone's doing a good job, and, you know, sometimes you gotta get to know someone, get to know what they're doing, I, I understand that part of it, so I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go a year out.
I, I think what, I think what you're gonna have is, I think you're setting a bad precedent. You're gonna, we're gonna have, before us, we're gonna have letters that other town employees are deserving and need a, a merit raise. I think we're setting a bad example, and he should be, he, he should be set at the same 2% raise that everybody else is getting.
Well, town employees, unless they work directly for us, I want that letter from the department head, I want it from them.
And I just wanna, it is in my budget request that was submitted to you guys in December, this increase. So, I'm just doing the formality of coming before the board, it is budgeted for, it is in the budget spreadsheet that's been provided.
Didn't we just have a discussion about retaining and attracting the best employees we could? And apparently, this guy is doing an outstanding job, which the department head came to us on his behalf requesting a merit increase because of the work he's been performing. I don't have an issue with it, I don't think we're gonna run into other issues with it. I think we're still gonna be under the budgeted amount that we've already had in the budget line item for this. I agree with Bill that we do the one year, and then next year we come back, we, we look at it again. I don't think this is gonna be a huge...
Well, if this was in, if this was in the, if this was in the budget, why weren't, why didn't we know that he, he may be looking at a, a merit raise at, at effective July 2019?
It's in my budget request that's in front of you.
Yeah, yeah, it's in, it's in the paperwork. I, I'm, I'm gonna stick with the, with the 2% that the others, others are getting, I think it's, I think it's a bad precedent. Not that he doesn't deserve it, but it's setting a precedent.
So, the 2% everybody else is getting, what is that based on? Is that just having a pulse?
No, we sent, we, we sent a request to the department heads of a 2% raise.
But, again, is, is that based on having a pulse? Is that based on, on exceeding goals given by the department head to the employee? What's the 2% based on? I know every year, I get a, a, a goal sheet. Bill, this is what you need to do to accomplish in the year, and, you know, based on the level of accomplishment, I get certain percent increase in my salary. So, but it's not just a given because I'm alive at this time next year that I'm gonna get any type of increase at all. So...
Okay, so, so it's not a given that you get an increase?
Right.
So, we're...
So, here's a department head says, here's an employee that's gone above and beyond, I'd like to give them an increase in their salary to reward that extraordinary effort.
So, if you get, if, if you get, playing the devil's advocate, if you get six department heads that have their employees, and they want them to get a merit raise of these proportions here, how, how do you say no at that point? If, same scenario, department head says that their employees should be getting X amount of dollars, a merit raise, they're, they're going above and beyond the same verbiage that's in this. How do you say no? If you said, said yes to one person, how do you tell the others no?
Given the same set of circumstances, I don't think you could. I would, I would find it hard to replicate that, the same set of circumstances across every department and every employee in, in the town. That would be almost beyond the, the, the statistical probability. That you'd get 100%, everybody was a, a rock star, everybody was a super, that's just not the way the bell curve works in, in life. You have the overachievers, you have the underachievers, and most of us will gravitate toward the middle somewhere.
Expect to see, expect to see department heads putting in for some of their employees for more than a 2% raise. And I think you're gonna be hard-pressed to say no. And, but, I'm, I'm voicing my, I'm voicing my concerns, I can see the handwriting on the wall, so, whatever you would decide to do. I, I think it's a bad precedent. And he does do a good job.
If, if this gentleman had been hired, and when we hired him, is he doing anything outside the realm of his work when he was hired? So, we hired him for A through Z, has he been doing other things outside the realm of his work? That he was hired for?
Well, it's hard to say, because his job description was sort of a catch-all for everything. I mean, he just fixes anything he sees everywhere, he's on the roof of the, he's in the attic of the library fixing the fan belts on their heating system. I mean, that's not in his job description, but he does that. You know, he comes in on the weekends to see if it's still running. He just, like I said, he will find anything, he was up on the roof of the fire station when they were having a leak out there. I mean, he just goes above and beyond on any chance he can get.
So, if we had to hire, if we had to make a call to an HVAC company to crawl into the library ceiling to change the belt in their compressor, give me an estimate, ballpark figure, how much that would cost us?
Well, I don't know on that. So, electrician, it's about $175 an hour to come up change a ballast.
I don't, I don't understand the...
Because it's on prevailing wage.
Yeah, I don't understand where, where you're not getting the, the savings that this guy is providing.
I, I don't think we can argue the savings, I don't think, I don't think we can argue that, I think it's definitely there, there's no argument there. If you were to take what Ed's saying, and you were to worry about what Ed's saying, are we gonna cause a problem? But I'm trying to weigh, I'm trying to weigh that situation against making my decision, that's all I'm trying to say.
I don't think you're gonna have that same situation where you're gonna have someone who's going above and beyond, saving $175 for every instance that he's getting involved in, above and beyond his job description, versus the $1.50 or whatever we're talking about in our difference. I mean, how many times have you done that in the last nine months? Done, done things that would've saved hundreds of dollars.
All the time. I mean, like I said, his next project is gonna be painting all of the jail cells, because we were written up by the state for paint, I mean, I couldn't tell you last time.
Right, so, short sentence, I, I moved to, to approve the first year increase.
So, that's going from, focus my eyes.
Eighteen fifty to twenty dollars.
Next year, Bill, I agree with you, Bill, next year we look at it again.
Right.
For the budget.
So, the increase on a 40-hour week would be $60 a week, a yearly would be $3,120 a year.
Now, to take what Mike just said, and to what, to try and, what Ed's saying, do we need to change his job description, or do we need to add anything to it that, no? So, we don't get in that argument on the road?
No, I think his rate is too low for his job description.
Right, for what he's doing. Okay.
And I think that was when we put it back out to save money, we lowered the rate to try and save some money. But I think it's really, the rate is lower than what the job description is providing.
Right, and if you took a $1.50 an hour, I think it's like 40, $4,080 a year roughly, somewhere around there?
No, it says 3,100.
3,100, okay.
I would bet that he's probably saving them, yeah, so, it's ridiculous, it's a moot point.
So, your intention is seconded?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it, sure, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on these before us? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor, all those opposed, all those abstaining. Now, we have the fiscal '20 budget discussion. Now, I know you had a meeting with finance committee just the other day, right? Have any of the numbers changed? Have we moved toward a closer finalization of...
The finance board hasn't voted, they haven't voted anything for that.
Oh.
So, the spreadsheets you have are, every day they change, because those different numbers come out, so. The first page, again, just my proposals of how to use the FY '18 free cash. So, we annually appropriate now for the OCAB stabilization and capital stabilization, so those are items that we've been planning for year after year. I was proposing this year adding $25,000 more to the accrued buyback account, as we alluded to, there's a sick buyback this case year. It's the first one of that.
That one. Got it.
So, $25,000, as people are getting closer to retirement, they are going to be using up money that we have set aside in that sick buyback account, so just to put some money in there to build that account up. When the town clerk came before the finance board, she alluded to the fact that we would need new voting machines in 2020.
Reason being?
Apparently, the ones we have are not going to be servicing. So, the price for two voting machines is $10,000. Instead of putting that in the budget, it's easier to make it a one-time cost. That was the police cruiser that you guys seem to support, if you don't support that, that's, that's a capital item. And then, you'll see in the book under our capital improvements, there's a section on Bagnell School. So, this is just pretty much an arbitrary amount. They have to do some asbestos abatement, again, we did a few classrooms last year, we have to do a few classrooms again this year. The classrooms are, it's $11,000 to abate per classroom. My plan is to use some summer program money again to do some of those rooms, and then, they need to do three rooms. And then, there's additional money too, there's a couple other items on their list that they could cover, depending on what we feel is the necessity down there. So, it's just starting to make an investment in some capital projects at that Bagnell. Again, these are just my recommendations to you, you know, finance, on how to use that free cash.
So, again, if you were to try and find the money for the fire chief, and we were to not do the police cruiser?
You can't take that out of free cash.
Can't take it out?
You don't wanna, you don't wanna balance your budget with free cash, that's a bad...
Bad habit to get into.
Bad habit, because it's one-time revenue, if you don't get it next year, then you're in a deficit to start, so.
I like to call it wish money. It's not a guarantee.
So, these are really one-time items, the only one we make that exception for is the OCAB...
The only one we make that exception for is the OPEC, um, just because that's something the board decided he wanted to do on an annual basis, so, um, the rest of them really one-time came up into either as a fund or to fund those items.
But you have the, the salary, uh, fire chief's salary in the budget, and...
Yes, so when you look at the...
So it's all rolled in there? It's all baked in that number? And your deficit is...
Yeah, so as of right now, I don't have a deficit. I've, I've cut, you'll see in my recommendation line, there's cuts throughout all budgets to make up that deficit.
So you're actually showing a small surplus?
Yes.
Forty-seven hundred dollars with the increase in the fire chief. So you've got it all baked in and still have a surplus?
Yes.
As of now?
Yes, again, this board and the finance board may not agree with some of the cuts I have to propose in order to make that happen. But I went through and cut where, you know, we could scale things back, even some of them just a little bit, but, uh, where we could scale some things back to close that deficit. I started about sixty-four thousand dollars in deficit, so, I, I cut a lot. The Whittier number, I have not heard from. I'm hoping to get something from them tomorrow. So that number under the education budget is just a complete estimate, as is Essex Tech. If you'll recall, with Essex Tech, on an annual basis, we don't find out until the following October of our budget year what our appropriation with them is. The good news is, we have eleven students at Essex Tech, seven of them are graduating. Uh, we have eleven new students that have applied. The chances of them taking seven new students or even eleven new students is slim, so I'm hoping that next year, as you see, I cut that budget slightly, uh, 'cause I'm hoping that we'll have less than eleven students the next year. We take our student, uh, Whittier, um, again, I have no idea where we'll come in. It was higher, again, that's based on the number of students, it was high in 2018, it was low for 2019, based on our enrollment. Everything else, that the, um, my recommendation includes the salary for the highway superintendent, which was an increase from the previous incumbent, so that went up a little bit. It includes the cemetery superintendent, which was a big jump that we made, um, last year, so that, we had to find additional funds in that line. So...
And just to clarify, that, that cemetery commissioners came before us? When we hired a new employee, my clerk, I saw that one, and we needed to find more money.
And they've just come back?
More?
They've just come back to us recently, again.
Yes, so they went to town meeting, we moved the money probably on part-time, we originally wanted to hire two people.
Right.
And then they decided that the first one they hired, they would promote instead of hiring a second person. So we moved the money at town meeting, and then they had to come before this board to approve the actual salary change.
Right.
Yep. Uh, so I can certainly answer questions, um, if there are specific questions you'd have to improve.
The library spend, um, meets the, um, minimum amount they needed to keep there?
Yes, so you'll see their budget is higher than the two-and-a-half percent, about two percent, because they have to meet those spending requirements.
That keeps her accredited, and we wanna make sure that doesn't get...
If the, if the school, the Whittier school thing, as you just talked about, what would that put back? If it went in the favor of us, what would that put back? Money-wise, I mean, saving why?
I don't know.
We don't know.
I have no idea.
That's why she's got a plug number in there right now for...
I'm talking about the students, if we...
I have no idea how many students. So, I, I'm hoping to get a number, um, this week on that. If it's lower than what's estimated, then I'll start going back to where I was recommending cuts and filling that back in.
I know from my son that there was a trend that they were moving back to Penn Tucket from Whittier. So I don't know if that trend will continue, hopefully it will. I don't know what's going on, but, he said there were a number of students that started out at Whittier, but have changed their minds and come back.
Not hands-on anymore. It's not really hands-on anymore.
Our retirement...
Never was. They don't want, they don't want electricians, they want electrical engineers. You know, they want you to go to MIT after you graduate. It's not direct, that's for folks that we used to go to.
So the retirement appropriation on your spreadsheet is slightly higher, we got an adjusted amount, uh, this morning or Friday, um, so that's actually five-thirty-six, so it's only eight-point-nine percent increase, instead of what they originally projected. So that came down slightly. The streetlights, because we have gone to LED, that has gone down again.
Even though we've added a couple, it still goes down?
Yep.
How does that, that work? Did there any, haven't been any more requests for additional weight? So the two we had seemed to fix everything, that's good.
So the items are still wild cards, as at the Essex Tech, um, the veterans budget, we never know what we're gonna get submitted for, um, receipts and for payment on that, so that's always a wild card.
That doesn't seem to be, to deviate very much, though.
Um, no, it, most of the time it's lower than what, um, we budget, but it certainly could go up if they approve the veterans' services.
Nice to see the, uh, snow and ice increased a bit.
You'd like to...
I thought, no, I say it's nice to see it, uh, in, increased a bit.
Yes, I would like to increase that. My original budget was that going up another twenty-five thousand, um, but that had to be cut when I was going through American...
It, uh, I, I wonder, I, I see a, an increase in, uh, a tree warden's expense of fifteen thousand. Do, do you really think that's enough? With all of these, with all these dead trees that we have around, trees that need to be removed, uh, I, I, I don't think that's a, a realistic figure.
It's not, and actually my recommendations, I cut that back to ten because we needed to cut places, but no, we're spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dol, of dollars, thousands of dollars a year on tree removal. And right now, it's all coming out with the highway budget, because we don't have a budget anywhere else.
And it, and it should be, uh, and, and there's more that should, should come, should come down.
Yeah, yeah, we really could, or we should look to do an article to do tree removal, um, you know, and just put a lump sum aside and get a bunch of them taken down, but, uh, we spend a lot of money, it's very expensive to take trees down. So that's another one. Snow and ice, the tree, those are things that I would love to increment and re-increase up to more realistic numbers, we just, again, don't have the capacity.
Well, at, at least going to two-hundred thousand is, is, it's more realistic than it, it, it used to be only a hundred thousand, we're now, last year was a hundred and sixty-five, but it, it's, uh, nice to see it, uh, at least increased a bit.
Yeah, and it definitely helps at the end of the year to cover that deficit. The police budget, um, the, that includes an additional patrolman. That's something that you all in the finance board will have to decide on. As it is right now, I kept it in there, knowing that we have the proposed forty-B coming down the pipeline, but, uh, that's something you guys will have to decide on. If that is removed, then that frees up additional funds to put, um, elsewhere.
Wait, the officer for the forty-B now?
Well, he, he put it in now, because right now he has, I think it's three shifts a year, oh, I'm sorry, three shifts a week that are just reserves. Um, and the training requirements for reserves are becoming that of...
So it's no more reserves?
Not, well, he'd still need reserves, but not for the full-time shift. He would remove one full-time shift.
'Cause that project will probably be five years down the road before that thing even hits ground.
But that will impact, uh, obviously the number of patrolmen that we would need.
Right, but not for fi, for five years? So if we're doing it for that reason, then we wouldn't need to do it right now.
Right, no, it's, he's trying to remove the reserve shifts. And he identified that in his budget request. I think everything else, um, the technology budget, um, and you'll see in the budget document, I put a pullback up of all the expenses with the new server and the new software, we have annual licensing costs that has been severely underfunded for years. So those are realistic costs of what we need to maintain our infrastructure. The legal expense, we're actually trending at, um, probably top of that right now this time, um, with eight months of bills in. It will ramp up a bit as we get to town meeting, but that seems to be a safe number to keep in the budget. The insurance, the property and casualty insurance is another wild card, I won't cut that until closer to April. Uh, we are still budgeting for the VZ Park insurance, um, so that's at about thirteen thousand a year. The conservation commission, I think, made two payments in the fiscal year, um, so that did help, but anytime we have any type of claim or we add new vehicles or new equipment, it's increasing our premiums. The group health insurance is another wild card at this point. That includes two additional, if we had two people take health insurance, it accounts for some type of rate increase. Right now, they're saying it's gonna be around three percent, but they won't vote on the rates until, uh, actually, between the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
So the two people are the new high, road commissioner and the fire chief?
It doesn't have to be, it's just if two employees, anyone who's eligible could sign up, but yes, I planned for two people.
Were those the two you planned on?
No, I wasn't really taking that, the fire chief, 'cause I did that before you guys really decided to.
Now, the road commissioner, Bob, uh, Mr. Akely currently gets help, so that's gonna be a wash between, so that's not, so we're adding one, so we, we know we're gonna have to add a fire chief, that's gonna be one of the people.
Right, but they might not take insurance, so they're not given, and then someone else may lose their insurance, or may wanna come on our insurance during over a moment.
Okay.
Again, it's kind of a wild card, who, people may leave our insurance, um...
But you put in a little fluff there, just in case.
I always try and add a little bit, just in case we have some movement, but until the rates are set, I really won't know, um, how much extra there is in that line. The trash, um, so most of the trash is a set, the monthly collection is a set rate, uh, it varies by our recycling. So we were paying a couple hundred dollars a month for recycling, we're now several thousand dollars a month for recycling. So we had to put an increase in that in order to cover our recycling costs.
Why, why would we change so much?
Because the commodity of recycling has dramatically increased, and everyone, that's...
The Chinese do not wanna take it, and, and that was the biggest market for our recyclables.
So then rather recycle, we better off throwing it in the trash?
I'm not gonna say that publicly.
Well, I mean, if it's gonna save, if it's gonna save people money, maybe we should, I don't know.
Well...
Maybe it's gonna ruin your place, it's real.
Yeah, we also have, you know, responsibility to, uh...
But I thought that there was, uh, that there was a conversation about the trash picking up and not using the recycling truck. Thought I was right, I saw that somewhere, that they were just throwing the recycling in the trash and the trash, it didn't matter what you put out, they was all going in one truck.
No. It's, it's going into one truck, it's a co-collection truck.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, that's broken, so they're coming up twice a day, once with trash, and then once again for recycling. But no, it's a co-collection truck that has spots for both trash and recycling. But no, you'll see, I actually think, um, uh, the MMA sent some notification out to the board, um, just because it's such a wide topic, I think their upcoming selectmen's meeting might be talking about recycling. Everyone in the state is faced with it, and we're all sort of struggling in all of the contracts now, uh, with trash companies allowed for increase based on market rate. So, it's just, it's not, doesn't matter, our, our volume isn't increasing, it's just the cost to recycle is just dramatically increasing.
The, you know what the tipping rates are, by the time?
It's the market, like it's dried up overseas.
Yeah.
So, um...
There's no place to take it.
There's, there's, there's no, nobody wants to buy it, so now, you know, you've gotta pay to, to get rid of it. It's like years ago, I used to be able to take old oil from the car...
Mm-hmm.
And sell it to people that would turn it into home heating, or, I used to get a gallon, and then suddenly I had to pay seven cents a gallon to get rid of it.
Yeah.
So we're paying twenty-five thousand a month for collection, and our per ton is seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
No, no, I'm saying just for the, just for the, yeah, okay, so you took that number times, um, per month of the year?
Well, the collection rate, the per ton is seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven.
No, no, I'm trying to find out what we're paying totally in a year for the tipping.
What is, is tipping collection?
The dump, the dump.
Oh, I don't know, that's included.
Dump cost.
We don't pay that separately.
Well, what I was getting at is, I think I had done this a long time ago, when I was thinking to become a selectman, and, um, if I remember, the tipping rate to buy a truck and to add two laborers on our highway department, you could save money on the rubbish. And I had brought that before a past group of selectmen, and I was wrong, but it wasn't a very favorable conversation.
Yeah, but that was five years ago, right?
Oh, yeah, probably longer than that, but, um, you know, you can buy a used truck for forty thousand, you eat it the first year, you go over to DPW, you know, it, it may be worth looking at to see...
But you still gotta pay to get rid of all the stuff.
Well, that's why I just asked, if, if, what does it cost a year to get rid of it? You know what I mean?
So you're looking at taking it in-house versus now outsourcing it to see what the difference would be?
Right, right. Because at seventy, I don't know how many ton a year, do you know how many ton a year we get out of here?
About twenty-three hundred.
So twenty-three hundred times seventy...
Oh, that, that's a hundred and eighty thousand.
Hundred and eighty thousand times a seventy-eight?
No, a hundred and eighty thousand is the total, seventy-eight times twenty-three hundred.
Oh, so it's a hundred and eighty thousand?
If that's what that me, I don't know what that means.
That's what that means, yeah, so a hundred and eighty at, do some quick math, a hundred and eighty, a truck at forty, um...
Salary at forty.
Two-twenty, labor is at, another hundred and twenty? Two, driver labor, what's that total?
What'd you say, one-twenty and two-forty?
No, it's more than that, I think, doesn't it?
No, you said forty-five.
No, you said a hundred and twenty, and then we're at a hundred and twenty.
Two-laborers.
Oh, no, two-twenty, we were at two-twenty for the...
Yeah, two-twenty, one-twenty, and then the truck at forty.
Two-twenty, one-twenty is three-forty?
Three-forty, three-eighty.
Yeah, three-eighty.
So you're at three-hundred and eighty.
And this is about a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
And this is five-hundred?
But that doesn't count recycling. Recycling is on, on top of that.
Right, so if you have two employees that work forty hours a week doing just rubbish, and then possibly do rubbish? One day would be collection, or two days would be collection, and two days would be recycling, you're still hiring the person...
No, 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 but I'm saying the cost to recycle is on top of what...
Oh, oh, that wasn't that number?
No, we have to add the cost of recycling to that.
Whatever that...
I'd be no bad number.
And that's about, we're estimating forty-two thousand for the year.
And these guys, these guys are picking up trash and recycling every day, five days a week. What's that?
Here at four-twenty, four-thirty.
Yeah, and you're still, so, a hundred grand.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't given the, the driver, the, the workers' benefits. We haven't insured the truck, we haven't...
Or there?
Yeah.
We're, we're getting pretty close.
I think you're close to...
And right now, we assume no liability.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We'd, we'd assume it all at that point.
Liability from...
Any hazardous waste, any hazardous contaminants, any things that...
But you're right, Bill, you're, you're, you're getting close to that.
Right, right.
And not only that, but, uh, with your own crew, you can offer, um, the, the leaf pickup and stuff in the fall, like you, you had mentioned before.
Yeah, if you, if you were to sit there and say that that rubbish company's gotta be figuring their hourly rate at so much per man-hour, they want so much for their truck per hour, and then they want the tipping fees on top of it, I think if you really did the numbers, you'd, you'd probably come out, you could save money on the rubbish. I do, I believe it. Now, if you, if you're talking liability and stuff, that's a whole different story.
And I would say on top of the two, you have to hire a full-time person to manage the calls and the routes, so...
Well, that would be the, the guy, the DPW.
I think you need to administrate first. Do you have any calls, we get this trash?
But even still, you're, you're fifty-thousand-hundred.
But who's doing it now? Who's doing the calls now? Who's the answer?
I get them, and Laurie and the board of health get them.
And I, and I get them.
So you wouldn't be getting them anymore, and then...
Right, but someone would have to get them.
I understand that, but I'm saying that there would be someone, maybe when we have a DPW, that would morph into that position or whatever, you know what I mean? I mean, it's gotta be more...
I think you're still to have an admin to do that.
Yeah.
But even still, you're, you're under your number fifty-thousand.
Well, Laurie would still, whoever does the billing, we're dealing with the contracts, you or her, I'm talking about the daily route, once the route's set up, the route's set up, you know what I mean? Once the guys know every day, they gotta go do it every day. And when the truck dumps, they gotta bring the slips in here, or whoever, they gotta bring them. And when the truck dumps, they got to bring the slips in here or whoever they got to bring them. I mean, once it's up and running, I can't believe it would be that costly to keep it, you know? The initial cost, you got the truck to buy, you know what I mean? You get maintenance on the truck, but I mean, I don't know. I truly think it's worth looking into.
The, the, the truck is only, is your only variable. Everything else else is going to be fixed cost. Your manpower, your fuel, everything else, you're...
You have to have a repair item.
What happens if your truck breaks down? You only have one. At least with, at least with waste management, if their truck breaks down, they bring in another one.
No, they call up and say, "We can't make it today."
Well, take your truck with you.
I'll be honest, I, yeah, you know what I think is going to crush you? The liability insurance.
Well, maybe, I don't know. All right, get off this, I'm going to another one.
No, we can work it out. We've run them done because they ain't even running numbers.
But I think when we're looking to...
Are they going to a year or two, you're going to be right at it?
I know I did it a while, a certain time ago, and I figured it out, but I actually went around. Passed, I mean, it's the right one, it didn't go well.
It needs a little bit more forgiving, right?
So the training salary on the police, it didn't jump much.
I did not because he was requesting it on the wrong side, so...
I guess, I know when we increase the fees on the liquor licenses. I was hoping that that money would somehow be earmarked toward additional training for the officers so they could be trained in impairment as well as... And I noticed they've done a great job lately. They've got one guy with fentanyl, they got another guy drunk and drunk, driving drunk, right? I was hoping that this line item would increase a little bit so they could get that extra...
Something else on that.
Extra training on drug impairment.
Which is fine, but we can't sustain another officer getting that training. So if the priority is training, then we can remove the other, the request for number of officers. That's something you guys will have to decide on with the police chief as to priorities. I can't fund both of those.
Okay.
And if you look in the training line increase from 18 to 19 by almost 5,000. So they've already gotten a jump in the training line, but I can't fund both of those. And I know that was a priority to you, but I thought adding an additional patrolman would take some of that burden off.
Yeah, it could. Okay, so it's in the front row. All right, so that's Sophie's choice.
Yes, so it's not specifically earmarked, right, exactly.
Okay. Fuel is another wild card, right?
Yeah.
All over the entire, the entire budget.
Yes.
So God forbid we launch a bomb in North Korea or vice versa, that, you're going to blow through that line like there's no tomorrow. It's always a volatile time.
Yeah, all the facilities back.
Right, all the commodities, basically.
We've been doing well with them, but I don't know.
All right, listen, one crew in a third world country, one pipeline breaks, and yeah, everybody in the world suffers. Any further discussion on any items in the budget?
The van staying in, I guess?
So the van was, after talking with the finance board, they decided to put a line. So she amended her request to add $5,000 of vehicle maintenance in her budget to cover any work that might need to be done on the van.
But that's something we had suggested as opposed to spending $58,000 on a new van.
No, I just, I'm going through this booklet, and I just saw the name.
That makes much more sense.
Yes, so Bill, it's still in the capital plan, but it won't be funded in the capital article.
Right.
But it was still in the plan because it was requested.
Yeah.
Slickman Watson?
Oh, I think we need to look, look at the water department a little bit closer. We just got that not long ago.
Yes, so I left you the amended budget, or the budget tonight, as it came in about a week ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we ought to relook at that.
Now that I have it.
Yes, so that should go under tab 30 in your book, just so you keep that.
Okay, good. Anything else, Selectman Watson?
Uh, no, I don't have any more.
Okay.
We still have some time to look, relook at some of these. We got questions.
I would hope so.
And as I get more solid numbers, I'll be giving you revised schedules.
Terrific. So moving right along, I see it's late. We have votes of the board to close the 2019 special and annual town meeting warrant.
So this is just a formality. You do it every year just to stop requests coming in. I will be consolidating that and providing you with a draft notice from the upcoming weeks.
That requires a vote?
Yes, please.
So...
I'll make a motion we close the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you.
Could you amend that to include the special as well?
I'm sorry.
Could you amend that to include the special town meeting warrant as well?
Yeah, I suppose so.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. We have minutes, minutes from the February 4, 2019 meeting. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Well, I, I'm staying, I wasn't here.
That's true. Okay, we're jumping right into selectmen's time. Selectman Watson?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Selectman Dunn?
I'll pass.
Selectman Wood?
Uh, just one thing. I have the meeting on the 12th here at Town Hall for the school project meeting with senior citizens at 11:30, March 12.
Thank you for sharing that with us. You will be by the time that meeting's over. I'm sure you will, sir.
No, it's got to be before the meeting.
Selectmen's time. I'll just use this to say, great job by your highway department once again, clearing the roads. Great, great job. Also, kudos to Chief Gillen and his entire department for keeping our roads safe. They've made two great busts in the last week or so. Getting these crazies off our roads, great. Massive kudos also to Fire Chief York and his tremendous crew for squatching that fire on, I believe it's Salem Street, right? Was it Salem Street? Great job there. So we're looking good, and that's all I have. Oh, yeah. Older unfinished business. Selectman Wood?
No.
Selectman Dunn?
I'll pass with me.
Selectman Watson?
Nothing.
And I shall also pass, giving the time. Finance director's time.
Just briefly, for anyone who may have missed the call this morning or the notifications on our website and Facebook, due to the storm, trash is delayed one week. So for the remainder of this week, trash will be delayed.
Whoa, 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 one week or one day?
I'm sorry. For the remainder of this week, it's one day. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know it's getting late. We're all getting punchy a little.
We're getting Bill's truck.
I was going to say, holy cow, yeah. Going to have to buy Bill's truck if that...
So just as a statement, beginning this Thursday, I will be out on medical leave at this time. It's not known when I will return to the office, just so people are aware. I will not be in the office. I will at some point be checking my emails, but I don't envision that to be for a couple of weeks. So I will be working on the budget and the warrant from home. Just not sure how responsive I will be on other matters until I get a little bit better. And on those same lines, until further notice, the tax collector's office will be opening at 10:00 a.m. on Mondays. I cover right now from 8:00 to 10:00 until Caitlin gets in, but I'll put her over her hours for the week. So we'll be opening at 10:00 a.m. on Mondays until further notice. We have a note on our website. I will put it on the door to the office in the front of the Town Hall.
And do you have a laptop you're taking home?
I'll bring home the surface.
Okay. Correspondence, we have minutes from the February 19, 2019 meeting, minutes from the February 26, 2019 meeting, and letter to Fort Abbott Circle regarding unregistered vehicles.
Which has since been resolved.
I, I knew that would be resolved because I saw who the letter was to, and I knew that is such a diligent person that that person would resolve that so quickly that we wouldn't even know it happened. That brings us to the end of our meeting today, I believe.
We'll go back to what you said.
Go back, he's going back.
You going out on your leave. Number one, I wish you all the luck, and I think I said it earlier, I know it will go smoothly. And don't worry about the town because you've got four people here that I'm sure if we need something, we can chip in. And you've got a police chief and a fire chief and everyone else in town, so I wish you well, number one. And number two, do you need any of us to do anything, like as far as your messages coming into your office, as far as calls or complaints? Or you don't need to be dealing with that stuff in your home?
No, so I will change my voicemail. I actually will not accept messages because of the messages for weeks. But I will leave Caitlin's phone number. She has the chairman's number if there's anything she needs, and she can certainly reach out to me. I do appreciate your comments, and I will say department heads, employees here have been fantastic. They're offering to pick me up and drive me to work if I need to, and people are really offering whatever I need help with, so I do really appreciate that. And it's just sort of the unknown of how long I will...
I thought you were going to Uber.
So I appreciate it all, thank you.
And I know we've spoken before about not rushing back. We don't want a Dustin Pedroia type of incident where you rush back, trying to get back sooner than you're ready to get back, and then we lose you for an extended period of time, which we didn't plan on. So take your time, recover to your, to the fullest extent possible, and come back when you're, when you're ready to come back. And try not to rush and push the process faster than it needs to be. It's only going to, in the long run, typically turns out detrimental to everyone's cause.
So Caitlin will be here at your next meeting. I'm hopeful to be at the meeting after that. That is very true.
I might not be at the next meeting. I don't know yet. I may not be at the next meeting. I don't know yet.
Does everyone else want to be here?
Will you let us know in advance just in case?
If I, let's put it down as, as a no at this point. If I, if I'll be here, I'll let you know.
Okay, so that means if there's any change in the three of us...
Oh, Bill, you're not going away this week.
We need to know because we can't have a meeting.
I know.
All right.
Yep.
And so on your next agenda, so I changed the discussion a little bit around your personnel procedures. I didn't limit it to just the first 15 pages because I didn't know if you were going to have continued discussion from tonight. So I just left it at continued discussion of the personnel procedure manual.
I think that's probably the best case. I think we're just going to have to explore that a little more so we don't, we don't harm anyone.
So I'm kind of confused where we went with the fire thing. Where are we at with that? I'm kind of confused. We're going to submit stuff to you, I mean...
So I am going to use the one on the job description to put one together.
And if you have it...
I have the salary range.
And if you want to make any adjustments to that one on job description, please just communicate to her separately without including any of us. And then she'll...
So something you want to see in there.
She'll...
And the dollar amount will be 65 to 70?
Yep.
And do you think you'll get that advertised? You won't at the time you leave.
Well, you guys still have to vote the job description.
So that'll be...
So once I, if I can get it done, which I can't guarantee, but if I can, I might be able to do it tomorrow. If I can get it done before your next agenda, then you guys can finalize it, and then I can go, I mean, I consented to advertising from home because it'll just go into message and through some listserv.
Okay, so mark it up by tomorrow in order to get it by the next meeting.
If there's anything, I mean, I'll go through and I...
I know.
Okay. Motion to adjourn at 9:54.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Good, seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Terrific.
Yeah.